Good evening, everyone. Tonight is October 25, 2023. It is 6:02 PM, and I'd like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us if you care to.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda excluding item number four?
So this is Janet. I move to approve consent agenda numbers three, five, and six. And number five, the resolution number is 23-13.
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any questions, anyone, or discussions? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse?
Aye.
Public open forum. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public open forum? Or anyone online? And I can't read the name.
We have somebody.
Come up to the table. Pull the microphone right up to you so we can hear you good. And give us your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Richard Johnson. I live at 18330 Loyola Street Northeast in Columbus. And I just have a basic question because I don't understand government politics, and I think I need to get an explanation. I've talked to Rob and I've talked to Elizabeth about this on the phone. Why is the city of Columbus involved in a bond issue for the city of Rosemont? It just doesn't make any sense to me that we should be involved in a bond issue. And from what I understand about bonding, if you're signatory to a bond and they default on it, they could come back to you. And I don't understand why we're getting involved in it.
All right. I'll defer that to our legal counsel because it does make sense once you understand it.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, I think the gentleman should stay for the hearing item. I think it's a hearing item. Julie Eddington is here, our public finance lawyer, so she's going to get into the detail, and she can address your question. And then if there's any follow-up, I'm sure the mayor would entertain that as part of public comment. So my suggestion is you wait and hear the presentation. It is, for the layperson, it is somewhat unusual, but I'm sure Julie can address your question as part of her presentation.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you have questions, just give me the sign and we'll get everything straightened out for you. Anyone else to ask any questions? Or I don't see any. I can hardly see that. Anyway, all right, then we'll move on, please.
Mayor, real quick to Bill. So would he bring his questions back up under the public hearing, under the discussion?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you, Dick.
Any problem with that, Rob?
Nope. That is A-OK.
All right.
Thank you.
So now we'll move on to number eight. Public hearing and discussion and a motion for the 2023 conduit bonding. We have Julie Eddington here, who will answer our questions and everybody else's from Kennedy and Graven. It's on pages three through 15 in our packet, if you care to follow along. And of course, if there's questions, make sure to ask because we've been through this a couple of times before. Good evening, Julie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Pull your microphone up, yeah?
Oh, sure. Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Closer. You got to talk right into it.
Okay. My name is Julie Eddington. I'm the bond counsel for the city of Columbus. I also help with development work here. The city of Rosemont is doing an affordable housing project. And because Dakota County is an entitlement issuer, they did not have any more housing allocation to give to the Rosemont deal. So I asked Elizabeth if it would be okay if Columbus would consider issuing those bonds on behalf of the Rosemont project. That's completely legal. And it's important to note a couple of things. These are conduit bonds, meaning the city has no obligation whatsoever to pay anything regarding the bonds. It will not impact your credit rating when you go out and do your general obligation bonds. If there is any default or anything like that at an IRS audit or anything, the developer would need to pay for all of that work. So the only thing that needs to happen with the city is to report your conduit bonds on your financials every year. And that's just the name of the conduit bond and the amount that's outstanding. It goes in the financials, and that's a Gatsby rule that we have to follow. But that's the only thing that needs to be done with respect to the bonds in Columbus.
And it's in the notes section. It's not in the audit. It's in the audit, but in the notes section.
Correct. Yes, thank you. Thank you. So again, Columbus issuing these bonds for another city is completely acceptable under Minnesota law and the IRS code. These bonds are tax-exempt bonds, and they will be used for building affordable housing in Rosemont. And there are no obligations with respect to the city to pay anything with respect to the bonds. The bonds themselves are going to be in the amount of $35 million. Some of that is allocation that we got from the state, Minnesota Management and Budget. And there's also a component that's recycled allocation. So it's allocation that's been used before and can be recycled. The allocation that you get from Minnesota Management and Budget allows you to have the developer obtain tax credits, which helps the project. It will provide funds from the government to the project. Recycled allocation can be used to issue bonds, but it does not create additional tax credits for the project. So when you look at this and you see that we're talking about recycled allocation, it's just another way for them to add a little bit extra to the bond issue, especially because these days the housing construction market is extremely inflated and that, you know, the costs are just extremely high. So whatever we can do to get the project to work, one of those things is to use this recycled allocation, which is also something in the IRS code and is totally acceptable under the IRS code.
So if, may I ask, so what's in it for the city?
What the city gets in return is a conduit bond fee, and I believe that's $75,000. And that money can be used for anything that you want to use it for. Could be for parks or equipment or whatever you'd like to use it for.
And Mr. Mayor and counsel, I think this is the third or fourth conduit bond series that we've done with your office. Is that right?
Correct. We've done several nonprofit deals and a couple of housing deals. And maybe a charter school, too.
Yep, there was the three. This was the third.
Okay, got it.
Both this council and the prior council.
So that the reason we're involved, or one of the reasons, is it's a nice little bump for our budget. And we're not liable for their default or any problems that come up. And also, I think I recall from earlier meetings that since we had no bonding projects this year, that enabled us to do that. Am I correct?
Right. So the city has up to $10 million every year that can be bank-qualified debt. And you want to preserve that anytime you need to have bonding for yourself. So if I'd come to Elizabeth and she said she had bonds that she wanted to do, I would have said, okay, then we'll work with you some other time and we'll have another city do this. So we just want to make sure that we preserve all the things the city needs for their bonding, but you didn't need to bond this year. So that's why we're doing the conduit bond here today. I will also mention that housing deals do not impact your bank-qualified bonds, but nonprofits do.
All right. Anyone else have questions?
I have a question. This is our third one, correct? So is there a limit? I mean, do they all of a sudden say? Because the first one was in other administration?
Yes.
So how long is that one going to last? They must last 20 years?
20 to, it depends on what kind of deal it is. If it's a bank deal, it might be 15 years or 20 years. A housing deal will also, will often go out till 30 years. But they're usually paid off before that because of the tax credits that they get.
And how did they come to $75,000? Is it a percentage?
It's just the fee that Elizabeth had chosen a fee, and then we, it has grown a little bit over the years. So that's how we came up with it, $75,000.
I remember the last one was $10,000. No?
No, it was 75.
The last one was 75, and it was 50 before that.
The one before that was 50.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
That's inflation. Goes from 50 to 75. Any other questions, anyone?
So when would us as council members, do we ask our questions before or after the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor and counsel, feel free to ask your questions now, and then you can ask questions even after the hearing as well.
Perfect, if I will, mayor. So I had questions in regards to page 14 and 15 because of signing pages before pages 14 and 15. Does that include what is on pages 14 and 15 as part of the document? With, as far as the wage enforcement and workers' compensation enforcement and such? Is that part of the document put forth before that?
It is actually Peter Orth, who is online. Thank you, thank you. He's online, so if you have questions that I can't answer, which is probably possible, Peter can answer those questions. But Peter provided me this list that is in your packets so that you understand what they require of their subcontractors.
So that is the general contractor or the developer?
Hopefully Peter can speak to this.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yep. Hi, Peter.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I was at the last meeting when we talked about this. I wanted to apologize for not being able to appear in person. The pages that were being referenced within the packet, those were taken out of our construction contract that we have with our general contractor right now. You know, it was an effort to kind of show that we, you know, we understand the concern with wage theft and, you know, proper construction practices. And we wanted to share that with Julie to there with the council. You know, to address some of the concerns that came up during the initial council meeting when we discussed this last time. So that is within the construction contract with our general contractor.
Okay, thank you. So are you, you're with Shafford Richardson then, Peter?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm the development manager. I'll be managing the project on behalf of the owner from now and through construction and then until leasing as well.
Okay. So you're working with Bauer Design Build on this project?
That's correct.
Okay. So things were brought forward to me by a resident that's actually here today. He spoke under a public open forum, but it was brought forth to me that there's been continual issues with whether it be labor trafficking, tax fraud, misclassification of workers with that general contractor that, who they would subcontract to. So I would like to see these documents. I really do like them as something that's binding in regards to approving this bonding. That's all I have.
May I ask a question? Did you want this to be placed into the bond documents or?
Yeah, I guess, I guess so there's more enforcement rather than just the general contractor saying that this is what they're going to do, you know? Because that, their word versus something that's binding in a legal document, I'd rather see it in a legal document. If possible.
I could certainly work with Peter offline to figure out what we can do with the bond documents.
Do you believe that's something you could work out, Peter?
Yeah, and honestly, I am an attorney, and I would think that we would have more teeth in this with the contractor to be able to enforce this if it's, if it's in the construction contract. And Julie could correct me if I'm wrong on that. I'm not sure if, I don't think we have an issue with them being in the bond documents if they're in the construction contract as well. I'm not sure if that's something that's typically, if that type of language would go into a loan agreement or if it's within any other bond documents kind of associated with the project. But I think we can, I think we can figure this out to make sure that everybody gets what they want.
Yeah, I think for you as a developer, it's kind of a safeguard, too, right? Because if something happens on that project with a third or fourth-tier sub, ultimately you're going to be responsible as owner of that project. So I just want to see and look out for you as a good developer that you don't get caught up in an issue because this contractor does have a past, and there's articles in Star Tribune. The Attorney General has gone after subcontractors they've used, so.
Yep.
And it was brought forth to me by a resident, so.
Yeah, I'm curious. Could you, could you share? Or, you know, we could talk about this offline. I'm curious if there was a specific subcontractor that.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, I think this is better shared offline.
Yeah, if you want to touch base tomorrow.
Sure.
Also, Mr. Mayor and counsel, I just have a question regarding the excerpt on page 14 and 15. Is it part of a binding construction document today or is it some sort of guidance?
I'll let Peter take that one.
Yep, it is currently in the construction contract that has not been executed yet between the owner and the contractor. That's typically not something that will get signed, you know, similar to the loan agreements that we're talking about associated with the bonds, you know, until right before we get to the closing table. It is in the construction contract draft, and it will not be amended.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, rather than referencing it in the bond documents, I think we should, we should, as part of your motion, indicate that you would like to see the, the city would like to see evidence that this made it into the construction document, these provisions.
Right. So the, so the general contractor is not a party to the bond documents? So it does make sense to have some sort of excerpt or some sort of extra piece of paper attached to the contract or some sort? And then leave the bond documents as they are?
Mr. Mayor and council member, does that make sense? I think I'm understanding.
Yeah, as long as it can be referenced in the future.
Right. So I understand your concern is that it become part of a binding construction document, not necessarily part of the bond document. You can reference that in the motion if you like, that the city will track that to see that there's follow-through. And that way, the bond documents, which are, you know, with different parties, will not, will not reference that.
Yeah, yeah. And I like the language. So wherever you got it from, Peter, I know Brooklyn Park and similar cities are using its exact template, so thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for the guidance in the last meeting. We're happy to share that.
Any other questions or discussion, anyone?
I have one, mayor. Who, the city of Columbus will track this or the city of Rosemont will track it?
No, Mr. Mayor and counsel, I didn't mean the city would track it. I understand the council member's concern. The city will be given a copy of the final document that's signed so that the council member's concern is addressed that there's a binding document that incorporates these provisions. But it's not up to the city to track anything on the project in terms of construction. Just the council member raised a concern, and this is a way to document that that concern has been addressed.
Thank you.
In a binding context.
Yep. All right. However, I just was reading through here. I didn't open the public hearing.
Right, you can do that at this time.
At this time?
If the council member's questions have been addressed, you can open the hearing.
Any other questions, anyone?
I'm okay.
Then I will open a public hearing and discussion for the 2023 conduit bonding. Should we read the printed newspaper notice?
Sure, if you like. It's not required to open the hearing, but.
I will mention, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we have published that in the newspaper, and that's required by the IRS requirements. So anybody who is reading your local paper should have noticed of this at public hearing.
So you can waive the reading of the notice.
So I'll waive the necessity of reading it out loud. And we've had a good presentation, so I'll close the public portion of the hearing.
There's people here who would like to speak.
Would you like to come back up and add anything to our discussion?
I'm fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So then we'll close unless there's some.
And we should ask if there's anybody else either online or in the audience.
Nope, I see nothing online with their hands raised. And no one else in the audience. I think I know everybody here, so I will close this portion with the right to reopen it if necessary. And I'll bring the discussion back to the council. Are there any other questions, anyone has that we should address? All right. Would someone like to make the motion?
Yeah, this is Rob will make the motion. Motion, move to approve, what was our number again there?
14.
14. Move to approve resolution 2314, providing approval to the issuance of conduit revenue bonds by the city of Columbus to the benefit of Adeline Avenue LLP and/or Shafford Richardson to include pages 14 and 15 of our agenda packet that address A through J.
It's Ron, I'll second it.
So it's been seconded, moved and seconded. Any other discussion or questions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Commissioners Report. I'm the liaison again. And so this is the preliminary and final plat on Cozahar, Cozahar addition, 14755 Lake Drive. So the meeting took place on the 18th of October last Wednesday at 6:00 PM. Barb Bobic was present, Robin Wood was present, and Lynn Carver Quinn, the chairperson, was present. We had a discussion on the Cozahar preliminary and final plat, and then we also discussed residential zone business. So I see we have Mr. Cozahar in the audience. Divana, come up to the table. Bring your son so he can help interpret, and we can discuss everything where we're at tonight. Pull your microphones right up to you so we can hear you, please.
Mr. Mayor and council members, you have two, an enclosure and also a new site plan. So the site plan at the top of it says, site plan for 36 additional parking. And then the packet starts with the public hearing notice at the top. And then there's also an updated planner's report, and that planner's report, it's the very last document in that packet. So those are the update, those are the updated documents that Vladimir and Dennis will talk from to give us the update from the planning commission to the council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So I think we can, the changes begin on page four of seven. Is that correct? Number 14. There are 51 proposed parking stalls on and on, 30 proposed parking stalls between the new building and the southern property line, and six proposed parking stalls along with the easternmost, easternmost wall of the building. So that's what's shown on our map, on our new, our new site plan.
I think that's additional. Because I think it's a total of 87.
Yep, I'm sorry. 30 additional proposed parking stalls. And why do we have the change? I think I remember, there were 51 stalls in the front. Yes. However, I think there was a little bit of miscommunication that the extra 30 stalls allows for insurance vehicles that are waiting to be prepared to be brought in and then moved through your facility. Am I accurate?
Go for it. Good evening. Yes, because last time was like a miscommunication about those, because we was talking about in general of parkings. But today, we proposed that new documents, like new document, which is say, because it will be in a backyard, let's say this way, it's going to be additional, I mean, it's going to be the asphalt already there, but we just in the first, the beginning, we didn't indicate the parkings, how many parkings is going to be there. But in the front is 51 cars, which is already parking, indicate in the front, which is going to be cars for sale. So we need, because we are a body shop, so we, and sales lot, so we're going to have cars from insurance, and they like to, I mean, until, I mean, the accident what happened, they tow to us and has to wait until a adjuster going to come and take a look at the car. So we, those kind of cars is going to be in the backyard, nobody going to see them. So that's why we need extra.
Does everybody understand the reason for that? And what condition are these vehicles when they come in? Are they terrible or some small things or?
Nothing terrible in this world. For our shop is, is not big deal, no. It's not going to, if it's going to be something which is, Mr. Mayor, you said terrible, for sure we're going to pull inside of the building. We try to, do not make our location to look bad.
All right. And another question somebody else asked me was, so on this rendition, so there's a solid fence, which we saw in some of your other, on this thing here. Yes. So it's solid fence on the south side. Yes. On the north side. North side. On the back side, east side.
Yes. It's not there yet, but we proposed, we're going to extend it.
So if you do put these cars in there, nobody can see them.
Nobody.
Unless they're inside the fence, stealing upcaps or something. Right?
Yeah.
So anybody have any questions?
I just, this is Sue. I have one question, and we had talked about the fence and the one that's on the east side, that it would be a different, a certain material it was going to be. I can't remember what it was now. I just don't see that in here, in the list.
So what is your fence made out of?
It's steel IABM posts and it's horizontal two-by-six wood.
I thought we had talked about composite. I thought we had talked about composite that looked similar to wood.
It is wood.
It is wood, okay.
Yes. It's, it's very nice fence.
And some of it's in place already, correct?
Yes.
Because I have driven by and seen it, I think.
Unless it was already in here and it's not highlighted in red. I just couldn't find which number it was in the recommendations. Okay.
Yeah, Sue, I thought I remember hearing the same thing, that it was gonna be a composite-like material, not wood at all.
And I don't think it matters. I think it...
I don't either.
But they talked about it, and there was three things, and one was about the rainwater, whatever. One was about the chemicals, and the other one was the fence. So I saw everything in here except for the fence.
We was talking about it, north side, the fence, north side. Whereas Jerry, my neighbor, he was telling us to put a fence, which I, last meeting, I said, yes, I am agree. I'm going to bring the fence to there. So just, I think we, before I will pull the fence, I will need to see the dimension, how far from the highway I have, I have the rules, how it's supposed to be. There is no question about it. It's going to be the fence there because I looking for for future even. But again, I'm going to talk with the city if it's possible to put a front chain link fence. But this is future thing. I mean, we're not gonna discuss right now. But the fence from the side, Jerry's side, there is two neighbors. And from other side is going to be, so north side and south side, I'm going to extend that fence.
Okay, yeah, I do remember we talked about it, and he was here, and everybody agreed.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure it was...
Yes, so that, that's what I'm going to do. Just I will need to see what, how far can I go from the highways.
Sue, is your question that you want to see the description of the fence in the recommendations? Is that, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I thought it was.
Yeah.
And the height and the material.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think it is in there, and that probably would be a good idea just because we've had other examples where we thought we knew what the fence was gonna look like, and then lo and behold, something else popped up.
Yes. So, and we can even, and because we all agree on what it was meant to be, and the neighbors agreed, I don't think we need to delay it as long as we make sure that it gets in here somehow.
So how do we do that, council?
Should we add to nineteen? Should we add to condition nineteen?
Please ask the question again. I was proving another...
So I think the question is that in the recommendations, there isn't anything that describes the fence that we've all agreed to. And I think what Sue is getting at is we should have language in the recommendations that do that. I think the only, I think what did get in there was, I think it was a point that I brought up, that we didn't want any outdoor storage that exceeded the height of the fence.
Yep, and that was different.
Yeah, and you know, one of the things that might have caused this not being in there is because I think we went back and forth on whether there was gonna be a fence for screening or those arbovites for screening. And so perhaps the fencing language didn't get in there because at one point we thought they were gonna be screened with trees. And then I think that was rethought. So I think that was a really good catch. I think we probably need to add that back in, the fence.
Yeah, because twenty-two only talks about all buildings, fencing, and site improvement shall be maintained in good condition. It doesn't say what, what the fence materials are.
Correct. So if you wouldn't mind, if that has to be an additional recommendation or it can be added on to an existing one, I don't know, but...
It could be added to condition nineteen that addresses fencing, right?
Okay. I have a question. So Ivan, on the area that, where there's now additional parking stalls, that, is that paved or is that like class five or gravel?
It's going to be class five.
Okay. And was, was that always class five? I mean, was that always a parking area? The reason I'm asking the question is whether or not we've created more impervious surface with this additional parking area, or was that always considered impervious in the, in the former plans?
So Ivan, you have, the additional parking spaces is paved. You have that class five area in the back?
I don't have right now. I'm going to add the class five.
Well, whether it's blacktop or...
I think, I think both are considered impervious. I just, the question is, because he's adding thirty more, I didn't know if that area was in the, in the prior plan, if that area was considered impervious or if it was not.
Where is that, those cars you're talking about? There is, in the plan, we have asphalt, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, not class five, it's asphalt.
So the Rice Creek watershed permit has that impervious surface up to, I forget how many square feet. The paved parking, which is the additional thirty-four, is included in his calculations for stormwater because it was considered impervious. The additional area, which is, it kind of looks like gravel, and I'm not really sure behind where it kind of has a yellow in it, it is. I know that's gravel. I'm just not sure what that area is.
The part that looks like the drive lanes?
The drive lanes are in yellow.
Yep.
So that's, that's, these are, these are the new drive lanes. It's this area that's new, and it does say that it's gravel. I'm, I'm thinking this is more parking spaces? I'm not sure what this area is.
It's not just, if you see, there is, we're going to drive there.
Oh, is that where you're gonna drive?
Yeah, we're gonna drive, like a little driveway, because the cars is going to be parked there. And we need to drive, we do not drive on the grass.
But I think your question is whether it's been included in the impervious calculation.
And it was originally in his Rice Creek watershed permit, it is included as impervious surface.
The gravel is.
It is.
Okay.
And then my other question is really for Kevin, because in your memo, I think you had some concerns about the stormwater drainage. Are your concerns, have they been adequately addressed, or are you leaving that up to Rice Creek?
I haven't seen anything new. I haven't seen any plans or anything to see whether my comments were addressed or not.
Do we know, Elizabeth?
I'm, I'm not sure. I know Eleanor sent out updated plans, but I'm not sure where she was at with, with Kevin. I do know that she talked to Dean about his issues, but not about, about those comments. So I know the plans just came in on Monday, or maybe Tuesday. So if Kevin hasn't had a chance to look at the stormwater or additional requests, then that will be a condition that it's subject to.
So how do we do this for tonight? Do we add that as a condition of the motion?
I'm just looking, because often Dean drafts it subject to the engineer's comments. So I'm just looking to see if that's in here somewhere. If not, it should be added. Pardon me? Number one, yep. So the, is contingent upon detailed recommendations of the city engineer. So that would pick up any additional comments by the city engineer.
I don't know that there's, there's not recommendations, there were just concerns, right? Am I really, the memo that was written on September twenty-eighth that was included in here? Yeah, no, I know, I saw that. But that's the recommendations. What I'm seeing in this memo, I think, are not recommendations. There's just a three concerns that Kevin had pointed out and saying that he didn't, he didn't see these things, I think, addressed. The plan needs to provide details on how the sewer pipe will be insulated. Additional details need to be provided to prevent the water from flowing onto the neighboring property. So those are there, but those details haven't, he hasn't looked at the details and said, yeah, I'm satisfied with these.
Those are my recommendations in terms of what I would need to see.
Okay.
So maybe I'll leave it to the attorney whether that's complies. But to me, I'm providing some general recommendations. I haven't seen anything that, I mean, it may be addressed. I just haven't seen anything, so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and council, typically before permits are issued, there's a review to make sure that all the conditions are satisfied. You can, your two options are to hold this over again or rely on this condition that is basically an administrative review.
I'm fine. I mean, I just wanted to make sure that it got addressed. So if that's how you typically do it, you're comfortable with that, that's fine with me.
So to further, to further clarify, I think then maybe you should put contingent upon the detailed recommendations of the city engineer memo dated September twenty-eighth.
So that would cover any concerns from the engineer or from you, Janet?
No, I, I just, I just noted that he had concerns that I hadn't heard get addressed in any of the meetings that I've been at. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't leaving something open and unaddressed. It sounds like we've got a process for this, so it's fine.
Mr. Mayor and council, if we reference the memo of September twenty-eighth, that, that limits the recommendations to that. So either we don't do that, or we then have to reference the recently submitted site plan. Because what we want to make sure we pick up is the site plan that he hasn't yet reviewed. So we could, we could strike the proposed amendment, adding the memo, because that would be limiting, or add the site plan. But I want to make sure that we don't cut off the engineer's review of the site plan that was just submitted a couple days ago. So my, my recommendation is that we not further amend number one, because it's written broadly, and it could be interpreted to include the site plan that just came in. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So you're saying move it as it is.
Correct.
In order to capture Janet's concern and engineer's concern.
That came in. That would pick up both if we don't amend it. Move it as it is. That's a very succinct way of saying it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone? Janet?
Nope, I'm good.
Ron, anything?
I have one clarification for the applicant, and I want to make sure. And I'm not belaboring the landscaping, but I just want to make sure that, number twelve. You're going to plant forty-two twelve-foot tall arbovites?
I saw, those are some tall trees.
I just want to make sure that that's what we're doing, or was that a typele?
I do have one hundred seventy trees over there. So I don't know if it's necessarily we're going to put, there's, how many is there? Seven?
It says approval of the PUD authorized substitution of forty-two twelve-foot tall trees. So that the seventy-two trees were substituted for the forty-two trees. But they were seventy-two five-foot tall trees, and you're substituting with forty-two twelve-foot trees? I just don't want it, I just don't want to read it in here that, in fact, because it's gonna be, I think, hard to plant twelve-foot trees.
Because last, last meeting, I understood we're not gonna put any trees in these arbors.
Okay, I think this is a communication problem. Pull your microphone up, first of all. I have a hard time understanding. And so forty-two twelve-foot trees, that's taller than this building.
No, they are going to, no, we're going to, it's going to be like three, three foot, right? Yeah, when I spoke with Vladimir after the first meeting, yeah, I told him, you didn't say right. So it's three, three feet tall when I'm gonna put it. But second meeting, you, you, Mr. Mayor, told us to make, better to make, build a fence instead of those trees. That's what I understood.
Yeah, well, I think this is a unnecessary problem.
Because...
I do remember talking about replacing the trees with the fence.
I do too.
Yes.
So I was surprised to see these arbovites back in this plan, but I thought you guys must have talked about it.
Vladimir just didn't take them off, so he's supposed to, I told him, but he...
So, Mr. Mayor and council, just to be clear, we're striking, the proposal is to strike all the arbovites in that condition in, in lieu of the fence?
Well, I think the original, the original intent of those arbovites were to screen. And I think we talked about the cost of them, and we talked about the deer browsing them and sort of defeating the purpose of the screening. And I believe at the last meeting we had, the, the recommendation or the discussion was about putting the fence back in and taking the trees out. I know you guys have had meetings since then, so I don't know what was discussed at those meetings. But I think, you know, our primary concern was screening. And if you can accomplish that with the fence, which it sounds like you can, then I don't think you need the trees unless you were gonna do it for ornamental purposes.
Yeah, and I think what happened is the site plan came back with the trees, with the arbovites and not the fence.
That's why.
So, so that's why the report was written that way.
Gotcha. Okay. And so the site plan that we have in front of us still has trees and not fence. I, you know, I was looking at that going, where the heck is the fence? Is it my eyes? I don't see it on here anywhere. And I figured it was like one of these lines that I just couldn't read the legend to.
No, and so I think that, I think that's where the, that's why I want to clarify it, because that's not what the, that's not what the site plan says.
All right. Well, I think we all like the fence instead of the tree, so can, can we move forward? Or do we need another site plan?
No, let me, let me write a condition. We'll modify twelve to make it clear. First of all, can you give me the location of the fence?
I thought it ran the whole, the whole south end, east end, and north end up to where the easement is for the road, right?
Now the fence is right here and right here. We must, I can extend the fence somewhere here. I think where is my parking spot? And, and fence over here. So, so we do not have to be, that's what I understood last time.
And, and the height of the fence is?
And Ivan, you were gonna put it on the east side too, right, connecting the north and the south?
Correct, correct. We go, I forgot to show, yeah, the, the fence right now is six foot. But the, when I took the, when I pulled the permit, I was, the post is, is for nine foot high. So the fence is going to be nine foot high.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
And just again, southeast?
South.
Southeast, north.
And north, and then heading north again.
Mr. Mayor?
Then I'm gonna add here and here.
It would appear that, as I look at the site plan, that the fence is shown as the red, in red with the little square.
Red little squares?
Oh, red little squares. I believe that's the fence. It's not labeled in the legend, but it appears to be a fence designation.
Can you, can you mark yours? Can you add to the legend so we have an approved copy for tonight?
Yeah, how, what was the height of the fence?
Nine feet.
Nine feet.
Nine feet, okay.
We're gonna say on the engineer's copy, so. So I'm gonna, Mr. Mayor and council, I just propose condition number twelve. Read approval of the PUD CUP authorizes substitution of the proposed trees for a wooden fence of nine feet, as indicated on the engineer's plan, the landscape plan marked by the engineer, today's date of October twenty-fifth.
You want to say substitution of a fence for the trees, not the trees for the fence, right? Yes.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fence for the trees.
So it would be nine-foot wooden fence, solid wooden fence. So Bill, then we don't need to amend condition number nineteen?
Correct.
And do we need to amend finding number 22, or?
Condition 22, or?
Nope, finding.
Let's take a look at that.
Those pesky trees are showing up there, too.
Yeah, let's just strike it, and we don't. Although, question for staff, based upon requirement for 13 to 14 overstorey trees, are we saying now that the fence is in lieu of the overstorey trees, or are we still getting overstorey trees? Is that, that would be a concern if the, if the code requires overstorey trees, and we're eliminating the arborvitae, which we're satisfying some of the tree count, we've got a potential code problem. Because I don't think the fence qualifies for a tree.
Nope.
So, yeah, so the fence can be there for screening, but then I think the code requirement of 13 to 14 overstorey trees come back, comes back, because it would just operate under code. Right, Elizabeth, I mean?
It would, it defers back.
Yeah. So, just so the applicant understands, the fence is now replacing the, all the arborvitae, but you still have a requirement in city code for 13 to 14 overstorey trees, that's my understanding. So you'll be required to add overstorey trees to your plan.
Sure, okay.
Is that clear? I think that can be in the record, since it's a code requirement, we don't have to call out a separate condition.
Okay. And then do we amend that, just strike the first sentence of finding 22?
Yes. Exactly. And the last sentence of that finding as well, because we're not, we're no longer substituting arborvitae. So based upon the developed portion of the property, approximately 13 to 14 overstorey trees are required. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
We will get you through this, Ivan.
Thank you.
So, anybody, any other questions or concerns? Anything we don't understand?
These little things were the fence, the fence things?
Yeah, okay.
But they just, I looked in the legend, because I don't know these things by heart, and there was nothing.
Is this dry vial, and is this a dry vial? Oh, I see what you're saying. So it's two way around. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Here, I'll try.
All right. Ivan, do you have any other questions for us, or concerns?
No questions, no concerns.
You know, you have to put in 13 or 14 trees.
Or about 15.
And a nine-foot fence.
Not, not arborvitae.
Sure, will do.
And you've got your extra parking spots, and that'll be enough to cover what you think you'll need in the future.
Yeah.
Yep. Anything else? Anybody? So who wants to try to cobble together this motion? Janet?
I'm up for the challenge.
All right.
So all that we talked about is for the CUP, PUD, not the plat, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then I would move to approve the preliminary and final plat Cozacar addition at 14755 Lake Drive, subject to the preliminary plat conditions 1 through 7, and the final plat conditions 1 through 9 of the planner's report dated 10, is it dated 10/25 or 10/18?
You know, when I looked at the beginning, you mean the first page, all the dates were crossed out, so I, I put 25 in there.
Okay.
But it's dated, the rest, the subsequent pages are 18, so maybe?
It's 18?
Yep. I think if you look at the, the red line, it's dated...
Yeah, you know, I mean, I was looking, I was looking at, but we can, we can date it whatever we want.
Let's, let's date it the 18th, because all the rest of the pages are dated 18.
Okay, dated 10/18/2023. This is Sue, I'll second.
So it's moved and seconded. Are there any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote. Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
And then I would move to approve the conditional use permit for planned unit development at 14755 Lake Drive, subject to conditions 1 through 27, of the planner's report dated 1/18/2023, with the change we discussed on condition number 12, substituting the nine-foot solid wood fence for the trees that were originally proposed. And also, striking in the finding 22, the first and the last sentence related to those trees. This is Sue, I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. Are there any other questions or discussions? If not, I'll call for the vote. Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. There we go. That's it?
That's it.
Two and a half years.
Thank you.
Where's the champagne?
So when are you going to start working, is my question? Or when can he start working, Elizabeth?
Watershed, final approval?
And do you have watershed approval now?
We aren't, we have preapproval, basically, or conditional approval, and we're working on final approval. Some of the questions they had were based on these meetings, so we've been waiting for this specifically.
So are you still looking at breaking ground this year, or is it next year?
Still. Next year, I cannot do anything this year.
Okay, so next year we go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good today.
Welcome.
Yeah, snow on Saturday, so you better go fast. All right. All right, so that's...
That's that.
Progress. So now we'll move on to our residential zone business and home occupations. It's in, inner enclosure plus a one. So on the, at the planning commission meeting, we had a public hearing. There was no testimony from the public, either in one way or the other, or regarding any of the issues. I think the planning commission and our council, Megan Rogers, described everything and explained it all well to us. Are there any other questions, or more discussion from anyone, before we dive into it too deep?
I have one or two, I can't remember. So I am looking at the memo, I've got to make sure I've got the right version here, the memo that we had in our packet, and, I don't know yet, just a second. What I would like to see is on page three, the second complete paragraph, where it starts with, "To be sure remote workers providing services for companies whose headquarters or local offices are not operated." I like that language, and I think we should move that also, or include that also, in the definition of home occupation, to make it very clear that a home occupation does not include remote workers. I like the way she wrote that. And then that way, I wasn't exact, I mean, when I look at, when I looked at the memo, there were these little three dots, and then there was language, and then there's like little three dots, and I wasn't sure what the three dots meant. But on page six, she has the remote workers showing up there again, not remote workers. And so I just, I just think it's clear to say, the intent isn't, for this ordinance is not to include remote workers. If we add that intent to the definition of home occupation, I don't think we need to have it sprinkled throughout this whole thing. And I, and it's really clear, and I like the language that she used. So I'm just suggesting that what she has on page three, we also include in the definition. And then she doesn't need to have on page six, professionals operating a business out of the home, but not remote workers. She can just have, she doesn't need to, she doesn't need to restate it, I guess is my point.
One's the study, one's the ordinance, so I'm not sure how that's going to work together.
Yeah, I'm trying to get on the, on the same page with Councilmember Haglund, only because I've got a couple documents here. I want to make sure that I'm tracking the, is this the handout for today, or?
It's the one that was in our packet.
October, the memo dated October 20?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
And so, it's, it's, it's a really nice, nicely worded memo. I mean, it really, really was. She did a fantastic job. So, all I, all I'm suggesting is that, because I've seen, I've seen and heard residents misunderstand the intent of what we're doing, and thinking that if we were telling people they, you know, they couldn't work from home, if we put that in the definition of home occupation, just makes it abundantly clear that this has nothing to do with people doing remote work from home.
And you picked up language from where in the?
I picked up the language that she used on page three, in the second complete paragraph, the first, the first sentence of that, "To be sure remote," we don't have to have the to, the to be sure, but it says, "Remote workers providing services for companies whose headquarters or local offices are not operated out of the rural residential districts are not subject to the requirements and limitations of the home occupation provisions."
And you want to see that added to the definition?
Yes.
Okay. That's easily done. I just had to get in the same spot you were.
Yep, that's fine.
And the ellipsis just means that there's more content that's not being shown.
Okay.
So...
And then the other, the other suggested edit that I have is to L on page six, has to do with outdoor parking. We talked about this a lot. And this might sound redundant, but it's not if you think about it. So what I had suggested was to have this reworded to say, "Outdoor parking of a single commercial vehicle that is registered to an occupant of the residence is permitted. No occupant may park outdoor more than one vehicle used in the home occupation and registered to the occupant." And then the, the sentence that says, "All parking must comply." So, so basically, you're covering it kind of from both angles. You, you can only have a single commercial vehicle that is registered to an occupant, and the occupant can only, cannot have more than one vehicle. And what that does is that if there's three people that have three vehicles registered to them that live there, that's fine. But one person who lives there can't have five vehicles registered to them and have it be parked out there. That was, that was my intent, and with the way it's written, it isn't captured.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor and Council, I think, subject to the city's nuisance provisions, people can have as many vehicles as they want, as long as they're not...
And that's true, but this is, this is vehicles that are used in the home occupation. So that's, that's what the difference is. So this would be in addition to whatever personal vehicles they might have, and that are outlined in our code.
So I, I got the first part, which is registered to an occupant, right? That's the...
Yep. And then, and then you would insert a sentence that says, "No occupant may park outdoors more than one vehicle used in the home occupation and registered to an occupant that lives at the residence," or, or an occupant of the residence.
More than one vehicle, and if you could just give me the rest.
More than one vehicle used in the home occupation and registered to an occupant of the residence.
Thank you.
Sure.
So Janet, you're saying that's outdoors?
Outdoors, that's right.
So they have a storage, they can park them in there?
Sure, yep.
I don't know why I was getting confused.
Because it's, it's complicated.
Well, I have to say that Megan did a great job with the planning commission explaining this.
Yes, I thought so, too.
I thought Ellie did a good job, too, when it came to parking, jumping in.
Yep. So then my last thing is, I think this is also on page six, under the three asterisks in the first paragraph. I think we had asked that, when she says, "The types of businesses that would be considered home occupations include," and the first example is a mechanic, I think we said, "Mechanics that perform all work indoors." That edit didn't get put in there. So then the, the edit that I had just spent a lot of time talking about, that would carry through to the ordinance that is on page, well, they're not numbered, but it would be page 10, I think. L on, in the ordinance. And then in that same ordinance, on that same page, that isn't numbered, but it looks like it would be page 10, under residential zone business. I think this is wrong, but you can tell me if I'm incorrect. It says, "Any occupation or business which is clearly accessory to and incidental to the principal residential use of the property in the rural residential districts, operating pursuant to an interim use permit approved by the city council prior to November 1, 2023, and subject to," and it says, "A development agreement." But isn't that subject to an IUP?
Yeah, I was, I was questioning that as well, because I'm not sure that every IUP has a development agreement. So I don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
None of them do.
Yeah. So I was questioning that myself, I'm glad you raised it.
So, so, yeah, what, either it gets struck, or you say IUP instead of development agreement?
Yeah, I think we can strike everything after the date. Operating pursuant to an interim use permit approved by the city council prior to November 1, 2023.
Do we want to keep the governing, the permitted term of the interim use, and subject to governing, I don't know?
We don't need it.
Okay.
The, the terms of the IUP would stand for that.
Okay.
Yep. So I think that that's not needed.
And then, I just want...
I just, I have to slow the roll a little bit, because I'm trying to make sure I capture all your edits. So the, the comment you made about the mechanic working indoors?
Mm-hmm.
I think you were trying to say where it would go in the ordinance draft?
Nope. So, so the mechanic working indoors was just her additional content after those three asterisks. So I don't, I mean, I think this whole memo stands, so I did, that's why I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, it's just an edit to the memo, it's not an edit to the...
Right.
Language.
Correct. But the, but the, the edit to the ordinance is on, is on L.
Got it.
And that's the same one we just spent a whole bunch of time talking about. So the exact same language that you wrote down from page six can go there. Okay?
All right.
And then I have one other, just a question. So under section, I'm on that same page that has the, that has the residential zone business. So on, under section 7A 614, rural residential district interim uses, I just want to make sure, this is what she is proposing, the, or, or basically for a phase out, right? This is where the planning commission said, "We would like to extend these by five years," and then she was going to go back and look at dates of what the IUPs were, and then figure out what five years from whatever the date was, that was, and, and that's the, that, I am assuming... am assuming is ending us up on November 1, 2027. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. Is that correct?
It is, is, you know, we had 18 months in there, or I would say that we weren't accepting applications because of the moratorium, and I think that's why she, she walked it backwards. So saying that legally operating November 1st, you know what I mean? Because some of them did expire in that period of time, but then we gave them 18 more months, which we're currently in, so that's why we backed it up. So, so they'll, they'll be varying different dates.
So the longest any of them would be, valid, would be through November 1, 2027. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that would be, that would be five years from the 20, from 2022.
Yeah. Ms. Mayor and Council, I'm confused, because earlier we used the date November 1st of this year, right? And, and now we're using November 1st of 2022. Since I haven't been in all those discussions.
I, I, I wasn't sure about that either. And then, and then I, I remembered the discussion from the Planning Commission, which was, well, what if somebody just renewed their, so they have five years, then would you add five years on top of that, and that would make it 10 years from now? And I think that's when Megan said, "Well, we'll go back and look at all the dates and, and figure out what five years from," and I don't remember what the benchmark was that she was referencing. So I, I'm assuming that that's what this paragraph is getting at, but I couldn't make the dates make sense.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Council, what I understood from talking to Megan after the meet, the most recent meeting, is that we're going to go to a very simple five-year standard for everybody. And my only question is, is it five years from this November or from last November? Because it seems like the discussion in the paragraph before is this November, because you're now adopting the ordinance. And so I, you know, for clarity, I would propose that the date below in 7A 614 also be November 1, 2023. Then you, then you have five years, and so it would sunset November 1, 2028.
Yep, yep.
So you have five years from when you adopt the ordinance. Yep.
Which would be really, that would, everybody gets the same thing.
Everybody gets the same treatment. Then we're not looking at dates, we're just saying, everybody gets five years, you're done in five.
I'm, I like the 2027 date better. So if there was a method to her madness that got us there legally, I would, I would rather have that, but I.
I don't think so. When I talked to her just two days ago, it was, we've got a real clean approach, it's five years from now.
Okay.
Basically.
All right.
So that's why I was confused when I saw two dates here. It may have simply been a typo.
Okay. Well, those were all my changes, or my edits.
Anybody else have edits?
Why are you looking at me like that, Ron?
I don't know.
You just, like, how it goes.
I, I just remembered that meeting also, and I remember the dates going back and forth. I'm trying to figure out what was said during that.
And I think that's why we tried to make it uniform, because it's getting confusing as to where you start and stop because of the moratorium, and when they could have done. So that's why I think Megan took the approach, saying, "Okay, let's just do it uniform, and just do five years."
And just out of curiosity, if there's, I mean, I can think of at least one, and maybe two. I don't know what else six IUPs are out there. I know like three of them off the top of my head. But at least two of those three, I think are going to fit into home occupation definitions. So, I mean, without doing anything, they just fit into home occupation. So then in that case, do the, do they still work under the IUP until it expires? Or do we just say, "No, now you're a home occupation, you don't even need an IUP?"
I think most of them are using their entire accessory building. So I think while they may, you know what I mean, I think you'll find that, that's the, that's the major difference. The new home occupation says 50% of the building.
Okay.
And I, I'm thinking about most of them, and most of them are using their whole building.
Okay. That's the difference. I wouldn't know that, okay.
What I remember is the same thing, because Kendall, his would be coming up right now, because he was the first one we kind of.
Yeah.
Four or five years in 2018, and it would be coming up.
And I don't remember how much of his, I mean, I, he, he kind of changed his business. So I think at one point he did use most of his pole building. I don't know, he's not doing that repair of the trailers anymore, so I don't think he's using that. And I think his was about parking his rig.
But once he parks his rig, his entire building's used up.
No, I think he parks his rig outside.
But if he had a second, do you know what I mean? If he was going to use it for a second one?
Yeah.
Because I know he was renting, renting space, because he had two flatbeds and some other things.
Yeah.
But that, that's the benefit of keeping their IUP, is they get to use their whole building.
Okay, well, so here's, here's, I'll amend my question. Are you guys going to go back to all of these and say, "Here's what your IUP says, here's what it would mean if you went under a home occupation, which one fits you now?" Because if they fit under the home occupation, it would be to their advantage to, just, they don't need a permit for that. They don't need to worry about anything. They can just keep, as long as they follow that ordinance, they'd be fine. Is that, is that something that staff was intending to do?
We were, we were going to send out letters, you know, we were going to send out letters, I think, because most people have already inquired, like, "What's going to happen to me?" type of thing. So we were going to send out, saying, "Here's your, here's your permit today," you know, "and you have five more years." We can also add, you know what I mean, if, if, if things have changed, you know what I mean, let us know, and we can amend our records. You know what I mean? Maybe some of them are done, you know what I mean, and they're going to retire or something.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, you know, I'm jumping in where others have tread, but it'd be nice to have like, almost like a one-pager that goes out with that letter summarizing the major changes, like the 50% change.
Mm-hmm.
You know, just, because we can, we can all read this, and we know what it means, because you've been working on it for a long time. But a simple, you know, almost like a Q and A sheet would be nice.
Yeah. I agree.
All right. Do you want to make the motion with your edits?
Let me look and see what the draft is. Do I need, do I need to just stick to the change in the ordinance, or do I need to mention also the change in the memo?
No, I've got the changes in the memo, so if you just want to cover what's in the ordinance, and I'll, and I'll track with you.
And is that part that we talked about, the residential zone business, that's part of the ordinance? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So then I would move to approve ordinance 23-09, amending chapter 7A zoning regulations related to home occupations and residential zone businesses with the following edits to the definition of home occupation, which would include the language. Do you want me to read the language, or do you want?
No, I've got it.
Okay. That we discussed?
Yep.
And amending letter L of the outdoor parking, as we discussed. Striking the remainder of the sentence, first sentence, after November 1, 2023, the rest of that sentence would be struck under residential zone business. And under section 7A 614B, changing the date, the dates, November 1, 2022 to November 1, 2023, and changing November 1, 2027 to November 1, 2028.
That's it. This is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions or edits? I'll call for the vote. Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob abstain due to not being at the meeting, that joint meeting.
And Jesse, aye.
And then I would move to approve ordinance 2023, gosh, sorry, let me say that again. Move to approve ordinance 23-09 publication summary as presented.
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote. Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob abstain.
And Jesse, aye. Engineer report, Kevin.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. First item I have is in regards, returning to the discussion on the residential driveway aprons and the Thurnbeck additions. At our discussion a month ago, I was asked to bring back another alternative, which would include a, essentially a participation on the city's part in the cost, in order to, in order to reduce the cost of the aprons. Jim and I reviewed this. Jim did another updated count on the number of aprons that are not paved, and basically discovered that there have been a number of them that have been taken care of in the interim during our discussion about, on this topic. And so to kind of make a long story short, would be my recommendation that we essentially just not do anything at this point. We'll just continue to monitor the situation. It seems like the, they are getting taken care of. If we were to do a, a public project where the city participated in the cost, tried to maintain residential costs at about $1,000, you would look at, be looking at, you know, something approaching $20,000 in terms of city contribution. From my personal standpoint, I think that would be a bad precedent to set. So I think we just continue to watch this and, and see that, see if it gets taken care of.
Thank you, Kevin. So I'll make the motion to approve the do-nothing option, and continue to monitor the status of the aprons over the next year. Is there a second?
It's Rob, I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for putting in that extra work. I read through your memo, and it makes total sense, and I appreciate that.
I agree. I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
The next item I have is, we did receive a request from Tom Carlisle of Sherco, representing his LLC for the development of Thurnbeck Preserve Third Edition, Buyback Incorporated. He's essentially making his final request to release all of the letter of credit that remains on that project. That's in the amount of $173,285.44. That project has been essentially complete for at least the last year or so. I would recommend that the letter, remaining balance on the letter of credit be, be released.
So I'll make the motion to approve the release of the remaining letter of credit in the amount of $173,285.44 for the Thurnbeck Preserve Third Edition project, based on the city engineer's memo dated October 18, 2023. Is there a second?
Rob, I'll second.
Is there any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote. Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorneys report.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, bear with me, we've got four documents to go through. We'll do it efficiently, but I've had to tab them to find them, because they're in various places. So the first one is the development agreement and encroach, well, there's two documents, the development agreement and the encroachment agreement for Kettle Cove Estates. Starting with the development agreement, this is a pretty standard subdivision agreement. We don't have major public improvements to address in this development agreement. We do have requirement for the encroachment agreement, which has been negotiated with the property owner. The encroachment, remember that the county took a significant portion of right-of-way with the plat? That pushed back the drainage and utility easements, so that the existing home of Christine Lynn is encroaching in the drainage and utility agreement, or in the drainage and utility easement. And so we've drafted an encroachment agreement. She was concerned that it was open-ended, that the city at any time could come in and basically require her to take down part of her house. So we agreed with their council that for a period of 15 years, the only way the encroaching structure would be removed is if it was destroyed more than 50%. So under state law, non-conforming uses can be constructed if they're damaged less than 50%. So we took that as a, kind of an indicator, and we agreed that 15 years was a reasonable amount of time for her to encroach in that easement. Doesn't mean that she can't encroach for longer, it just means it wouldn't be sooner than that timeframe. And there's enough of a drainage and utility easement that if we really actually had to do something within that easement, it could be done. So with that, you've got those two documents. It looks like it's written as one motion, so that would be fine if you want to approve both documents with one motion.
I have a question for Elizabeth. Do you, did you get a chance to just alert Anoka County to this?
There was no one, no one answered today, but I will, I will get in touch with them. The drainage utility easement is ours, so it really is, it would impact us. And the public right-of-way, it was already dedicated as a public right-of-way. So they did get their 27 feet.
So their, their 27 feet is unencumbered?
Yeah, I, I, I was just kind of out of courtesy, thinking it would be good to just let them know that, that we are agreeing to this, in case they had a project on Kettle River in the next 15 years.
So I'll make the motion to approve the Kettle Cove Estates development and encroachment agreements as presented. Is there a second? Ron, I'll second it. Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote. Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
The next item has a little bit of history, and I think the mayor's going to step, step down for, this is the well easement?
Yes, I'll recuse myself for this discussion and vote, and turn it over to the deputy mayor, Janet Haglund.
I had to say deputy dog, didn't you?
Should I go sit in this audience?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, the reason for the recusal is it involves his family's property. So way back when, I've got a letter here from Larry Boer in 2012. This is an easement, a driveway easement, essentially a reciprocal easement over the wellhouse, is it pump one and, what's the?
Two and three.
Two and three. And we obtained from the Priner family a well easement, going back to the construction of the well. Larry Boer was concerned that there not be conflicting easements when it was reviewed by, I believe it's the Department of Health that reviews. There's a 50-foot buffer between the wellhead and any improvements that would be in conflict. And so there's plenty, well, plenty of room, there's room for the Priners to have a driveway easement, a shared driveway easement. Probably if we can pull up exhibit C of this document, I think it probably shows best in there. And this was helpful, Kevin Bitner, the city engineer, supplied not only the legal description of the easement, oh, I don't know if it's. If you look at, maybe I'll, I'll work from the additions. If you look in your additions, and I'll just get to that, there's a updated version of this First Amendment, in fact, it's the second page, First Amendment to Well Easement Agreement. Do you see that in your additions?
Oh, some additions.
Page 43.
Thank you.
Yeah. And if you, if you flip through that fairly short document, you'll see two exhibits, well, there's three exhibits, including the legal description. Exhibit B is the legal description of the, the easement. We would make that easement reciprocal, meaning both the, the city would use that driveway, and development of the Priner property would use that driveway. If you look at exhibit C, and this is important, because much of that driveway that would, could be constructed in the future, would be on the grantor tract and outside of the wellhouse easement. And so, there it is on the screen, now you can see it.
Excuse me, please.
I don't see C. Yeah, we don't, we don't have C.
It's, it's in the addition.
It's in the addition.
But it's not page 43, because that's.
Sorry, I was looking at my computer.
That's okay.
No, it's.
It's page eight.
It's page eight of the additions.
Thank you.
And it looks like this document here.
Oh, there she is.
Little, little hide and seek with the exhibits.
Yep.
So what that shows, and we typically don't include a concept drawing in an easement document, but because this is helpful and illustrates how a 24-foot driveway easement would be constructed, partly on the, the well easement and partly on the grantor property, we thought it was important to show that a 24-foot driveway could go in there. At the time that a developer or the Priners would want to activate this reciprocal easement, they would be responsible for reconstructing the, the driveway. And they would also be responsible for giving the city a reciprocal easement on their property. We didn't include that in this document, because that driveway may that in this document because that driveway may shift, the improvements may shift. It'll pretty much, you can see that it's, it's like threading a needle. There's some wetland area and then there's the 50-foot buffer that's been drawn in there. So, it won't shift much, but as, at the time that they build out that 24-foot driveway, they would then give back to the city a reciprocal easement so that we could continue to use it. Otherwise, we'd have, you know, two-way traffic on half of the driveway and two-way traffic on the other half. So, that didn't make a lot of sense. So, this, this was helpful and we've included it in the easement document. So, when people look in 10 or 15 or 20 years at what those rights are, they have a illustration of how a two-way driveway could work. I point that out because in this, in the language that we negotiated for this additional driveway, we wanted to clarify that the city's responsible for the driveway as it's configured. If we can scroll back to Exhibit B, while the driveway is configured as it is today, the city maintains it, okay? When the driveway gets reconstructed, 100% of the cost of reconstruction is on the property owner, and then we share proportionally in the future maintenance of that once it's reconstructed, in proportion to what's inside the red line and what's outside of the red line. So, I'm going to pause there because, you know, that was kind of a late-breaking add and it makes sense that kind of everybody has their responsibility based on the portion that they control.
So, did you say the maintenance would be shared?
Today, it's 100% on the city.
But if it, but if the, if the driveway shifts or changes or gets reconstructed, it would be a shared?
It, it's proportionate. And it's proportionate if we can scroll back to Exhibit C. It's proportionate to, so the city's proportion would be the square footage that's within the red.
Mm-hmm.
And then, the property owner's share would be everything outside the red.
So, does that mean like Jim plows the red? I mean, does it get down to that or is it just like if you were laying new gravel or something like that, that's how it would work?
What typically happens with a shared easement is, is that the two parties agree who's going to do the maintenance and then the costs are shared.
Got it.
So, so Jim could end up plowing the whole driveway and then they get reimbursed, or the priners could plow the whole driveway and the city would reimburse. I mean, that's, you don't work out those details, you know, 15 years in advance.
Right.
Because who knows, you know, what's going to make sense. It just, it just provides that we share proportionally in the costs.
Okay.
So, this is something that if you, and I, I don't think this is in your packet, but I have a copy of a letter dated, dated December 4, 2012, from Larry Boer, who was then the city engineer, to the city council saying, the, the future, in the future, the city would grant the driveway easement. Well, the future has come. We want to, we want to do it before too many years pass and, and people's memories fade about this requirement. So, this is not a new obligation. This is an obligation that dates back to 2012.
And it just wasn't a priority, so it just kept getting pushed down?
Right.
Okay. All right. So, any other discussion or questions for Bill on this?
No.
And I would call for a motion. I can make, I can make it. So, I'd move to approve, whoops, put it down, move to approve the priner First Amendment easement agreement as presented. Do I have a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Okay, we have the motion and a second. Any further discussion? And I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And mayor is abstaining, so the motion passes.
Thank you.
Can I come back up?
Yes, you can.
Better watch it. I kind of like this power.
Mr. Mayor and council, this next item's going to take a little bit of discussion. I believe the last amendment's in your packet. This is the Columbus Apartment Project. I think it's also known as the Landing at Columbus. I think this is good news. I'm, we're going to take it as good news. The, Chris and Dave Harchenko have been working probably for six months, maybe longer, to find investors in their apartment project. They found some local investors who are involved in, I've just, I think the data is, you know, over 100 buildings. So, they're, they're quite, quite involved in development. Their names are David and Lisa Fisher and the Fisher family, what's called a family office. So, they invest on behalf of their family members. And it's identified as Rise Capital. They have done projects including Aurora Vista in Andover, Savannah Vista in Monticello, and The Lodge at Oak Landing in Cambridge. And what they essentially want to do and what they're proposing to do with the Harchenkos is they would step in as the developer. And they, they would basically undertake the financing of the project. They've already, even before tonight, they've undertaken their own market study, so they want to update the market study that was done, you know, probably 18 months ago. They're, they're very bullish on the project. The Harchenkos have essentially agreed to allow them to step into their shoes. They would, they would finish their due diligence by the end of the year, December 31. So, we would be proposing to extend the contingency period to December 31, 2023, and they would close not later than April 15 of 2024, maybe sooner. So, if the council agrees, we would have a, yet another amendment. This amendment would, would extend the contingency date with another payment of $10,000. And it wouldn't extend it 90 days, it would extend it through the end of the year to allow them to complete this market study. And then, once that time period, and, and they'd pay $10,000. Once that time period runs, then they're essentially in agreement to buy the property and build the apartment building. They're timing it to April 15, 2024 because you don't typically start construction in the middle of winter. So, that's the proposal. It's, it's as good as anything we've seen since, since we started, meaning that, you know, they've identified real investors, folks who have the, appear to have the capacity to build this project and are taking it on, taking it on at a time when it's very difficult to finance apartment projects. And you heard tonight with the conduit bond issue, just how difficult that can be. And that's, this one doesn't involve any public finance. And they're not, not asking for any subsidy from the city. So, that's the proposal. If you give us direction to prepare the amendment, it would do three things. It would extend the contingency date to December 31, 2023. It would extend the closing date to honor before April 15, 2024, and it would be subject to a $10,000 additional earnest money deposit.
I just have one question about the, so this other organization that's going to be the developer, Rise, and the people that you had mentioned.
Yep.
They are only in it for the, they'll develop and finance it, but then the Harchenkos will own it afterwards?
No.
No, or they're out?
The Harchenkos will be out, except that they will be considered as the contractor among two or three possible contractors.
Okay.
So, essentially, they're, they're basically turning, they're selling their development rights, that they've, the entitlements that they've taken through the city. We have to complete a development agreement. It's all but done. We need, I think, SAC and WAC estimates or calculations, but we're, we're done with the entitlements. We would also, before the end of the year, since the entitlements run out December 31, the city would also have, have to act to extend those entitlements. But they would essentially step into the shoes of the Harchenkos and the Harchenkos would earn a, a fee for the work they've done.
So, we went through a whole process of interviewing them and looking at all their information, and now we have somebody coming in to take over. Did, did you do all of that vetting of that organization or is, how does that work? Or do we just take the word that they have the financing and they've shown all that?
So, that's a great question. Our amendment is, what would be, I don't know, the Seventh Amendment, will be with the Harchenkos. So, we won't be shifting to the new developers until we sit down. In fact, I don't know what Elizabeth's calendar is for the staff meeting in November, but I suggest that they come in and meet with us. And then, we would do due diligence to make sure the statements that they're telling us about 100 properties and these, we would definitely do due diligence on them. And I think it would be good for them to, to meet with the council, even if it's just in a workshop, you know, just to say who they are and what their plans are and so forth. So, great question. The amendment would not be with the new entity. The amendment would be with Chris and Da, or David Harchenko is the, on the purchase agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And is, as far as you know, is the intent to still stick close to what was presented to us? I think it was 135 units or somewhere close to that in market rate and, I mean, they're not going to turn that whole thing upside down, or they might be, just don't know?
Well, that's a great question as well because I had a call with Chris Harchenko on my way up to the meeting and said a couple of things. One is, I wanted to be clear that the amendment is with them, not with the new party, because we haven't vetted them. And he said, yes, we understand that. There's no assignment of rights until closing, or, you know, close to closing. And the second thing is, I said, does your, you know, new investor partner understand that they, they're buying what you sold?
Mm-hmm.
In other words, there's a project that's entitled, and when you say it's entitled, it's the project that was approved. And he said, yes. He said, I reminded them of that as recently as Monday. So, good questions.
It will be interesting to see now today what the market study comes out to. And we'll ask them to share. They won't maybe share the whole study, but maybe some of the outcome of their study.
I've got a question, Bill. So, we're dealing with Harchenko or whatever, that, we're dealing with them. So, but we don't get to 10,000 until they make the deal with this other company, this other group?
No, no. The $10,000 earnest money deposit comes with this amendment. So, this amendment won't be effective unless they give us 10,000.
All right. Then my second question is, is we did this approval through the Planning Commission, how many years ago? It has to be two or three or?
It's, um...
Maybe two.
I think it was June of, I know it was June.
Well, I was on the Planning Commission. I remember.
I think it was June of 2022.
Oh, that, oh, okay. So, how long is that good for?
Well, it, it was going to run out this summer.
Yeah.
And you extended it as a council. And in order for them to start construction in April, you'd have to extend it at least another six months, 12 months. So, we, we will be bringing back an action for you as a city council to extend those approvals so they can build under them.
Okay.
But the incentive, keep in mind, the incentive for this party to step in is that they believe the project's fully entitled. And so, if we start to unwind that, then there's less incentive for them to step into the project because they have to go through some entitlements.
Thank you.
But we, you're welcome. You know, we have a development agreement. They know what the costs are. They have a plan. And as long as they build the plan that was approved by the city council, then they can go forward.
So, it saves them time, in other words.
And, and money. And, and so, what they're essentially, as I understand it, what they're paying for is to step into Harchenko's shoes and which represents, you know, the Harchenkos recovering some portion of their investment in the approvals process. And they've worked hard. I mean, I, I believe...
Question. I think when we initially approved this, they were under the ordinance for the Parkland dedication, the old ordinance, but since then, we've, we've updated it. Does that put this project under the terms of the new ordinance or is the old ordinance grandfather, are they under the old?
Yeah, they're under the old and that's also an important consideration because as long as they have a string back to those approvals, they're under the old.
Okay.
As soon as they come in, a new project would be paying Parkland dedication fees. So, when they asked us nine, 10 months ago for a city subsidy, we said, you're getting one. You're getting one in the form of not paying park, park dedication fees at, you know, per unit.
Right.
So, they understood the value of that. And that's, there were, there were, remember, there were three things that we discussed. It was the sewer and water costs. It was the fact that the road was built and the fact that there was no, there was essentially...
Traffic light, yeah.
Yeah, traffic light. And I think there's Parkland dedication for like one...
One unit.
One unit.
Yeah, I think that's what the old, the old, the old ordinance handled apartments that way.
So, anybody who comes in today, even on the same spot, would be paying park fees. So, that, that was our pushback nine, 10 months ago when they were looking at subsidy.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. So, right now, it's market rate. Is there the chance without our approval that they'd be able to change it to like a section, section eight if they're able to get some sort of government assistance as well?
No, that would have to be essentially baked into the pro forma. If you, if you do affordable, you need to know that it's affordable when you come in. It's, it's not something that you can convert to.
Yeah, I just ask it because I don't know what kind of financial people they're working with, so.
No, they, they definitely want to do market rate because the, the market studies premised on that. And so, they would not get the same level of rent.
Yeah.
If, if they did subsidize without, and that's, you know, that's when, when they came in and said, oh, we want subsidy. Well, typically, you, you, the only way that would work is with, with a housing tax increment financing package. And, and they didn't ask for that. And you can't backtrack and create one after the fact.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
You're welcome.
So, I'll make the motion to approve the Seventh Amendment to the Purchase Agreement extending to the contingency date of?
December 31. 12/31/23.
23.
Right. And a closing date of April 15, 2024.
With a closing date of April 15, 2024. Is there a second?
Ron, I'll second it.
Any other questions or discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
And I think this is my last item. The Brown Beagle Development Agreement is in your additions. And I would say that it's the, the, the close to final form, but we have some work to do. And so, we're asking for minor changes to be approved at the staff level. There, if, if you look through it, it's mostly the, the blanks on, you know, with regard to connection fees, park fee, and the surety. So, all those things are, are numbers that we typically generate at a staff level. Questions about the agreement?
So, what is their Parkland dedication? Is it based on the number of units they're building or is it based on, I don't, are they only doing one parcel?
Normal.
Are they subdividing?
There was, this is an existing lot. There was no subdivision.
So, and it says park fund payment, it'll be zero? Or just...
I believe this is because there was no subdivision.
So, we'll probably just strike that paragraph since it's not applicable. The main thing is we need to generate the connection charges and the surety for public improvements. And the, a couple of things that, that I want to point out that are captured in this, because there was a fair amount of discussion about this phased project. The conditions in Exhibit B address the phasing. Those are the same conditions that came through Planning Commission and Council. So, if you look at Exhibit B, item condition eight talks about the phasing of the project. And failure to meet the deadlines requires that they go through a mandatory amendment process. So, they do have a pretty tight window and that was, I believe, discussed at the Planning Commission and approved by the council. The other thing that we've added, and this was, I think, the city engineer's concern, is we added language that requires that they provide, if, if, if you think about the project, there's a private driveway system, but we have public utilities going into that project. And so, we want to make sure that we have the opportunity to have public easements within that private driveway. And I believe that comment came from the city engineer. So, those two items are addressed in this document. And that's about it.
So, I'll make the motion to approve the development agreement for the Brown Beagle LLC project, subject to minor and incidental edits by the city staff and city attorney. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussions?
Yep, I have another question. So, I spoke with, I don't know what page.
Oh.
I spoke with Elizabeth about this, whatever day it was, Tuesday. And one of the questions I had was the uses. And we were going to go back and look at the uses... And we were going to go back and look at the uses. I think the way this read, it was like any of the uses that are currently in that district would be okay. And I think the intent was to go back and look at the uses and make sure that there wasn't any that were so vaguely written, we might end up with a mess on our hands. And I didn't, I didn't have a chance to do that. I'm asking Elizabeth if she did.
I did not have a chance to look back.
Okay, so, I don't know if we want to do that now, or if you want to just go with what's in there. I, I, because I know that at the time we spoke with the developer, he wasn't really sure what was going to go in there. And I know that there's some limitations based on the amount of outdoor storage and the size of the building, so you're not going to be able to put an asphalt plant in there or anything like that. But I just thought it might, it might be good for us to just look at the, I don't know if you can pull them up easily, Elizabeth? Just the uses, and reassure that we don't have anything in there that's, could be, as Shelley would say, an ugly bugly.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, and if you look at, again, Exhibit B, Conditions nine, 10, and 11, I think get to some of the concerns that were raised about, you know, something's kind of slipping in there.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'll just, I'll just go through those. Condition nine says phases two and three require the submission of administrative review and approval of detailed plans, including floor plans and so forth. Number 10 says all uses of the property shall be strictly limited to the permitted uses and conditional uses in the LI district. That's, I mean, that's a statement of right.
Mm-hmm.
And then 11, and this is something we talked about at a staff level and came through in the conditions, "The future lease and occupancy of any building on the property is contingent upon formal written notice from Brown Beagle to the city with the contact information, business description, and zoning use compatibility of each lessee. The city must furnish Brown Beagle with a written letter of zoning compliance prior to the original occupancy of the building." So, this was getting at, you know, once the building's up and running, they can't just slip any use in. We've got to have notice of the tenancy. We've got to be able to compare it to the original approvals, and we have to be able to determine whether it is consistent.
I don't know why I can't get to the, I can't get to the website, but I'll try to do it a different way.
So, we don't have to, in phase one, they don't need administrative review and approval of the building plans? Or is that...
No, that would occur as a matter of course. I think this was trying to say to the applicants, because we have a, I think we have a pretty decent idea of what's going in phase one, right? They still would have to get approval of any building plans. That's just building code.
Mm-hmm.
I think what this was intending to say is, you, you have to come in, not only on the building side of the office, but you have to come into the zoning side of the office as well to make sure what you're proposing in later phases is still consistent with zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if there's a way to tweak this, fine, but that's, I'm just pointing out that those conditions were tailored to this concern about later phases and somebody kind of slipping into the building that isn't consistent.
Excuse me.
Any other questions, anyone?
So, in the LI district, we have pretty liberal outdoor storage of raw materials. And so, I'm just looking through this, these lists of conditions. And it says outdoor storage of other approved materials shall be similarly restricted as in Condition 12. And Condition 12 is talking about outdoor overnight vehicle storage. I think that was, that was why we thought we should really look at this, because, I mean, if they, I think somewhere in here, we must have, we must have defined how much outdoor storage they could have, but I'm not easily finding it. And I think that that's where you have some assurances that they're not, you know, that they're not going to put something in there, because the LI district allows it. But the size of this building and the size of the, of the sort of space that they have inside wouldn't accommodate it.
So, it's, it's 200, it's 200, 200% of the gross square feet of the building. So, would this be on the 10,000 square feet? Is, because are they, there are individual, there are six or seven individual 10,000 square foot buildings?
So, the calculation is what percentage of that?
It's 200% of the gross square feet of the, of the combined building floor area.
Right, so as each building comes through, they would have that amount of, so it'd be, 200% would be 20,000 square feet. But one thing I want to point out is, these are conditions that you've already approved, right? These are...
Yeah, I know, I guess I was just trying to, I was just trying to line up the conditions with, with the uses, because most of the, most of the uses envision 40 acres or 10 acres, or, I mean, much bigger land footprint than what these are going to have. And so, I just wasn't, I wasn't, I couldn't remember if we talked about this, and I wasn't remembering it, or if we haven't talked about it, how you line up what is an approved use in the zoning with the constraints of the size of the building and the size of the space around the building that they have to store outdoor things.
So, the uses, the uses that are for conditional, there aren't any permitted uses. It's municipal buildings and facilities and parks. So, looking down at the conditional uses, it's gasoline sales and related convenient retail sales and car wash, indoor automobile service and repair, indoor RV and truck wash facility, professional offices, indoor building supply center, commercial alcohol distillery, small building trade shops, meaning cabinet making, welding, machine shops, auto glass repair, on-premise business service, internet commerce with accessory indoor retail storage and sales, enclosed self-storage warehouse with accessory outdoor storage, new and used construction equipment sales with, and service with accessory outdoor storage, veterinary clinic or hospital, small animal indoor boarding, grooming, or daycare, laboratories, excluding animal testing, indoor commercial recreation, light industrial warehousing, production and assembly, wholesale distribution, distribution of truck terminals and data centers, and that's it. Oh, I take it back, indoor shooting range and sales, indoor shooting range, sales and service.
So, so, if any of these were proposed uses, there would be conditions layered on top that were consistent with the size of the building and, you know, what made sense that way? So, that's our protection, okay?
Right.
Now, I don't have any of those.
Any other questions? Then I'll make the motion. Motion to approve the Development Agreement for the Brown Beagle Project, subject to minor incidental edits by the city staff and city attorney. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
We'll call for the vote.
Discussion, or?
Oh, discussion.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Are we setting a record for tonight for the number of motions in one meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Honestly, this agenda was like over 150 pages. This was like a marathon.
Is it going to be like this till the end of December, Elizabeth?
I'm just, I'm...
So, Mayor and City Council members report. Ron, have you anything?
I have nothing.
Sue?
Nothing. I think Janet's going to cover the Personnel Committee.
Janet, Personnel Committee.
Yep, I have a couple of things. So, I'll start with the Personnel Committee report. So, at our last council meeting, we talked about our plan going forward and presented a timeline for the process of doing a search for a new city administrator. On that, on that plan, we had intended to come back tonight with a draft RFP for a search firm for you to look at. And we actually do have a draft RFP for a search firm, but we're holding off on putting it in front of you, because we've had a few developments along the way, all good, that I wanted to bring to your attention, and in one case, get a motion for approval. So, there are two, two items to discuss with you. The first is that we've identified a organizational development consultant who can help us with a number of things. This is a professional that we actually have been talking about bringing in for some time, and the time is right now, as we're looking at crafting the position description for the new city administrator position. And knowing that we're going to have to, we're not going to be able to find someone who does what Elizabeth does, because it's the work of about three people. So, we're going to have to strategically carve off some of what she does and, and in all likelihood, create another position or two that would take that on. And this organizational development person is trained to help organizations like ours do that kind of work. So, in, somewhere in your materials, which I don't know where it's at or what it was called...
Page 39. It's page 39 in the additions, and the additions say, additions up in the right-hand corner of the...
All right, so I'm going to familiarize myself with, okay, additions, additions, additions.
Ellen Heinrichs.
Yes, it's Ellen. Yes, here we go. So, on page 38 in the additions, there's a bio for Ellen Heinrichs that, excuse me, that is the consultant that we've identified. She's done work with a number of watersheds, including Rice Creek and Comfort Lake, Forest Lake. She's doing work with the city of Lake Elmo right now. She's done some work with counties, as well as a number of nonprofits and private, private companies. We drafted a statement of work, which you'll find on page 39 through 42, I think. Let's see, yep, 42. And what this does is, it describes for her what we're trying to accomplish and what her work for the city would entail, and what qualifications we were looking for in a consultant. So, if you start at the bottom of page 39 and read through page 40 and 41, you'll see the bullet points, and those are the actual tasks, excuse me. And we would expect her to complete these tasks by the end, by the middle of December. And then, there's a couple of things that we asked her to price for us as elective services that would be a phase two if we decided to go forward with that. Those are called on on page 41. And then, there's a list of deliverables that we would expect and which kind of prompt payment. And she submitted a proposal, which you will find on page 43. So, she lists all the deliverables, and she has scoped out the price of this to be $14,200, unless we wanted to take on the work of item number seven, which is the 10 job description updates and creating two new position descriptions, in which case, if we took that on ourselves, the cost would be $11,880. I would recommend we don't do that, because it would fall on Sue and I to do that, and that's about 40 hours of work at least. So, I'm not wild about doing that on a pro bono basis. So, I will, I will open it up for discussion at this point. What we would be looking for is a motion to approve moving forward with a contract to engage her to do this work for us. And I think, and I haven't mentioned this yet, I do think that by having her come on and the work that she would be doing, that impacts what we would ask a search firm to do, and maybe even eliminate the need for a search firm.
Oh, nice.
It depends. So, that's why you're not seeing the RFP. We're going to move forward with this first as a priority, and I don't, Sue, Sue, you want to add anything?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to make sure you mentioned that, because we did, we thought about that a lot. And I know we had a whole list of things that we were planning to do and discovering, and the question came up from Ellen also, like, if you, if I'm doing the job description, then do you really need a search firm? And I know that other people have asked that question also. But this is really going to help clarify for us the roles, and really, that's the first step that we need to do before we do the search. And so, that will help with that. And who knows in the next month or so, if it may come to light that we don't have to. We're not taking it off the table. We're, you know, still 80% sure we're going to have to do that, but that's why we wanted to wait on that piece.
And then, I will also, I mean, I want to get through this item first, and then I'll tell you what the second item is that also impacts the decision of whether we move forward with a search firm or not. So, any more questions on the organizational development consultant?
Thank you for the work on it.
Then I would move to approve the proposal from Ellen Heinrichs dated 10/24/2023 for human resource and organizational development consulting, as outlined in her proposal, to include deliverables one through seven in the amount of $14,200. Do I have a second?
Ron will second it.
So, it's moved and seconded. Are there any other questions, or? My only thought is, should we say not to exceed 14, too?
Well, I think in the amount of is, I mean, if she, if she doesn't deliver on some of these, then we wouldn't pay her that much, but that's...
It won't be more, right?
It won't be more than that.
It would only be less if needed.
You can say, you can say not to exceed 14, too.
The reason not to is she's billing this at a fixed amount, so you would say that if she was billing hourly against a cap. But since she's billing a fixed amount, it will be no less or no more.
Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
And then, the second thing I'll just mention briefly is, the other development that came up is that we have identified a couple of possible candidates for the interim position. We are going to have a very informal discussion with them next week, just more of an exploratory oral, almost, an oral letter of interest. And that's what we were planning to do with the list from the League of Minnesota Cities, was to send out letters asking for people who are interested in filling that position to respond back. These two just happen to be people that were referred on to us by others, and so, we're going to start there and see how far we get. And then, our next council meeting, we'll come back and give you an update on that. So, that's just an FYI. Okay, then, the other thing I have is a Sunrise River WMO. And you guys are going to be so happy, because if we get this done tonight, you won't hear me talk about this again for hopefully the rest of my life. So, we have before us, in the thing that looks like this, with a little picture of the Sunrise River on front, the memo, the updated joint powers agreement, and a cover memo that basically outlines what the main changes were, and some words of wisdom to future whomevers that get to serve on this board and might have some crazy inkling about withdrawing from a WMO, why you don't want to do that, and all the things you should consider before you, you go through the process that we did for the last two years. And so, I have two action items for tonight. Tonight would be to get a resolution approved for the updated joint powers agreement, and then the second is to ratify the budget. And our allocation would be $9,805.40, and that's for 2024. So, I know you haven't had a chance to look at this, you just got it. And I can tell you that you've heard me talk about this so many times now. You could probably tell me what's in here, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I have looked at this so many times, I think it's, it's fine, and there's no surprises, and it, and it accomplished what we wanted to do, so...
Mr. Mayor and Council, I do think, I was, the reason I was proofing a document, I was looking at this when you asked me a question about the, the site plan earlier. But what stood out to me, and probably is worth covering for the record, is on page three of three of the memo, issue and proposed solution. I think that gets to the, kind of the heart of the deal, and it's fairly succinct.
Right, so, so, I can, I can go through that. So, there were, there were a whole bunch of updates that were kind of bookkeeping, nah, bookkeeping, housekeeping updates that, that we did. But the big issues that we were trying to accomplish was to get all members of the JPA, all four communities, to name at least one city council... all four communities, to name at least one city council member, town board member on the board. Because what we found is that we had one city that didn't do that, and the lines of communication between the Sunrise River WMO Board and that city's board was abysmal. And we could not get, we couldn't get them to understand what had been discussed because they didn't have a representative there that was in their policy, in a policymaking role. So this JPA amendment requires that each community is required to have at least one city councilor, town board member on the WMO Board, and, and Ham Lake, which was the community that hadn't, is in agreement with that. The other thing that we, that we tried to correct was the requirement for unanimous ratification of the budgets. And so we, the problem we ran into there was that any one party could not ratify a budget, and it held up everything. And if they weren't willing to negotiate in good faith towards whatever it was that they objected to, everything else ground to a halt. And it, and it jeopardized actually the operations of the WMO because you couldn't move forward if you don't have a budget approved. You didn't have any money. So the remedy to that is to set some boundaries around how big of a change in the budget would require unanimous approval. And we basically went back to the watershed management plan that gets developed every ten years and gets adopted by all four cities. In that plan, there's a ten-year proposed budget. And what we're saying is that if the budget, if the annual budget that is put forth is more than ten percent of the annual amount in that plan for that year, then it would require a unanimous approval. If it's less than that, it would only require a majority. So that gets us out of the situation of being held hostage by one community who decides they don't like something, and they're going to hold up the budget until they get what they want. The timeline of the budget ratification was also a problem. When things were being held up, they could hold them up forever, and there was nothing in this JPA that gave them, they had to approve it at a certain period of time or else, and this addresses that. So they have a, they have a sixty-day response period, and if they don't respond within sixty days, it's assumed that they approve it and we can move forward. And if they do have a concern and they raise it, then we have to respond to that within thirty days, and that allows us to move forward if, if there is actually a legitimate concern that, that they raise. And then last but not least, the thing that held us up for the longest was the funding formula. And I think I reported back that the solution to that was to step away from the funding formula that actually used criteria like land mass, water mass, and market value, and just use the percentages that came out of the funding formula. Because everybody seemed to agree on the dollar value and the percentage. They just didn't agree on the criteria that led to that. So by adopting the percentages, we got past that stalemate. So those are the four major things that we accomplished in this new document. And so, any other questions? Thank you. I think that was good to get that out there.
Janet, if you've looked at it several times, I'm good with it.
I, I could, I could probably see this with my eyes closed. It's burned into my retinas. So then I would move to approve the resolution twenty-three dash fifteen, correct? Fifteen or sixteen? I saw six fingers.
Oh, one, five.
Okay, fifteen. Approving the updated joint powers agreement for the Sunrise River Watershed Management Organization.
I'll second that. Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
And then the second order of business is to approve the budget, and that is found on page, let's see. Help me on, Elizabeth. Where's our budget?
I don't think, I don't think there were page numbers.
Oh, the last two pages of the, of the packet that we were looking at. Actually, the, the last page, it looks like this horizontal. This gives you the summary of the budget. It totals forty-seven thousand, one eighty-six for the entire WMO, and Columbus's proportion of that was nineteen percent of the operating costs, of the non-operating costs and twenty-five percent of the operating costs, which totals nine thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and forty cents. Any questions?
Who would like to make the motion?
So I would make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four SRWMO budget in the amount of forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars with Columbus's portion in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and forty cents.
I'll second that. Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Janet.
Yep.
I'll report, Mayor.
That was a lot of, a lot of years of.
It was two years. It took two years to go, to get through this, so.
Almost to the date.
Huh?
Almost to the date.
Almost to the date, yeah. I know. I was two years younger when we started this.
But now you're wiser.
Yeah, I don't know, don't know about that.
All right. Let's move on to the Code Enforcement Quarterly, number thirteen.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, at our last meeting, we had our code enforcement, or our code compliance inspector come before you, give you a report on his quarterly code compliance data. And during that presentation, he indicated that he was working on a project for security throughout the buildings. He put a memo together. He's interviewed several entities, looking at security overall and throughout the buildings. And he's making a recommendation that we install security system in the buildings, and the cost allotted is to be seventeen thousand dollars. Then looking at the different vendors, he's indicated he would like to go through state contract bid, and that vendor is Protec Design. That vendor has worked with Running Aces and, and other entities that he felt were compatible with our city. And, and again, making that recommendation to go with that company in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars.
So Elizabeth, does this, Rob, does this put security cameras around the fire hall and such as well, or is it only the main building here?
I believe their security cameras is for public works and for our building. I don't know whether he included the fire building.
Yeah, I guess public works would be my main concern, really. I should have said public works.
I'm not sure what all he was doing. He just came to me and said, can we get power at different places? And I said, yes.
Okay.
That's all I know about it, so.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, it looks like the first item is access, and the second item is cameras.
The seventeen thousand is the doors, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, that's for the handicap accessible.
I'd say that's a pretty good price for a security system.
I was just saying, did I, did I?
Yeah. You had it in the right order. I just, because the question was about security cameras, I wanted to clarify. Your first action is on access.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Oh, you know what? I did mix this up. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it says security.
Because, yeah, you got Protec Design for city security. It's for the doors, isn't it?
It's for the doors. I'm sorry. The Protec is, is for the doors.
Oh, it wasn't. Okay.
You aren't crazy.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I thought I read that, right?
What does the other one say? Same? Okay.
You know, Elizabeth, I was reading this, and I understand it when I get through it, but when the company Protec Design, initial quote was eighteen thousand, I called them, explained the bids and whatever. The company contacted me and said if the city chose to do both doors at the same time. Was it half the price if they did one door?
I, I don't think it was, I don't think it was half the price. When we talked about this, we said, okay, should we just do one set of doors or should we do both sets of doors? And then we couldn't figure out, well, which door would be the priority because, again, both doors need to be, you know, ADA acceptable. So I don't think he, I don't think he had a, a quote for one door.
So that's for both doors?
That is for both doors.
Where did I see that it was under seventeen thousand? That was like sixteen ninety-nine.
It's the last, it's the last sentence.
Yeah, in the memo, wherever it is.
Which doors?
Yeah. It's on page forty-four.
Correct.
Sixteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars.
That's incorrect as well.
I rounded it up.
So, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding which doors these are. So it's the door into the community center from the parking lot and this outside door, just one of them though, right? Or both of them?
Just one, to the best of my knowledge.
And are we sure that that's wide enough to get a wheelchair through? Just one?
Believe so.
Believe so or no so?
It's.
I'm sure, no, I'm going to assume that.
They're handicap doors.
Well, I think they're, the company is being hired to put in the mechanism to open the door and do the elect. I don't know that they're responsible for making sure that your door is wide enough to fit a wheelchair. I, I'm only asking because those doors aren't that wide.
Right.
So I don't know if you'd need both doors to open up in order to get like a.
I know Grant got through both, you didn't mean when he, when we opened the door?
Yeah.
He, he got through both.
But he had a pretty narrow wheelchair. I mean, I've seen some that are pretty wide. It's, it's something we should check on before we sign the contract. That's all I'm saying. I mean, I think, because you might.
It appears from the memo that it's to provide handicap access. So the assumption is that, but, but it's a good question, to make sure that it's there.
It says it should be thirty-six inches wide, under ADA compliance.
Yeah, they can't be putting indoors for handicapped. You can't fit through.
Okay, then we're good.
I mean, that doesn't even, who's going to write that check?
Well, it sounds like thirty-six is what you needs to be, and Jim is saying it's thirty-six, so we should be good.
All right. I'll move to approve the Protec Design for the city handicap doors in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. And I'll move to approve the estimate of number five zero one seven eight from PTM Computers in Oakdale for an amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand dollars. Is there a second?
We have a discussion.
We didn't talk about that one.
Yeah, it's okay to take a second and then have discussion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Nobody wants a second until they've had a chance to read it?
Yeah.
Is that how we get to the discussion?
Yeah, typically there's a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
And a second, and then.
We're the only council that talks before we have a second.
Yep.
I'll second it so we can discuss it.
All right. So, yeah, I see what I did. I, I think I mixed, I think I mixed the whole thing up, so I want to make sure that we have the right motions now. So the ADA doors is the one for seventeen thousand. So on the agenda, it's even, it's even reversed. So I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page here.
Yeah, and the mayor amended the agenda, the motion to say handicap doors, right?
So, so question on that seventeen thousand. It says that then the price came in at sixteen nine ninety-one ninety-six. So it's seventeen thousand's too much then, right?
You just rounded it up.
You just rounded it up. That's all right.
Yeah, because it'll be based on the contract amount.
Okay.
And a dollar will be spared. I understand. You want to make sure that we.
Right.
Don't overpay.
All right, Elizabeth, would you explain the security?
Okay, so, so the, the security is the one that I started out with. So I, I don't, I don't have a lot of the details. I do know that Sean went to both buildings, talked to, I think it was five vendors, looked at different systems. But we wanted a system that was compatible with our door badges, so, because it will use the same system. So I know that was the basis of the security cameras, so that it would use that system. He then selected the P I N companies because they felt, he felt that they were most qualified due to their, their licensing, and we didn't need, we didn't need any additional licensing because it's a all-in-one tax system for this, these particular cameras. And looking at the estimate, we allotted thirty-five thousand dollars in the budget, and the estimate is thirty thousand, roughly two hundred and fifty dollars for this project. And in the future, I'm going to require people, if they have, while I'm still here, they're going to present their own memos. This is very hard to do when you don't do the work, and all you have is like a three-sentence briefing on what they did. So I don't have a lot of details for it, other than what's in the memo.
Can I add one thing? Because I don't, this is not my project either. The thirty thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents, that may or may not include electrical. So I, I don't, I don't know if he did all the electrical or not, but maybe I would do a do not to, do not exceed the thirty-five thousand, just because I don't know that, and I don't want them to have to come back and say, I need electrical.
Good point.
Do we have, do we have copies of what the bids are that might actually detail what it includes?
Right.
No?
I, I believe he does. So if you, if you want, we can have them, you know, sent to the council.
And what is NDAA approved? What's NDAA?
NDAA.
It says, it says a requirement for cameras on government properties.
I know, but what is NDAA?
I don't know.
I know that it was explained to him that there are certain cameras for government entities, and I forget the reason why they have to be certain rated, and I can't remember the reason.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm all for the idea of doing the security, but what I'm wondering is, so you have these cameras. Are they recording things? And who sees the recording? And who reviews the recording? And how, does it re-record over? Or does it, I mean, what, what is, what? I feel like we don't really know what we're approving here.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely questions about retention of images, how they're used, how long they're held. It seems like there's more questions than.
Well, I think, I think there needs to be like a policy or something behind this, just that, that talks about like maybe even the privacy side of it. I mean, if you're putting, are these cameras just on the outside or are they on the inside too?
I believe these are just outside cameras.
Okay.
I, I think you're bringing up a good point, Janet. I feel like there's a lot left out here, like, like Jim's bringing up. What do we have for electrical? How many cameras? Where are these cameras going? North, south, east, west?
But, but I also think, you know, you have cameras that are recording something, and then the idea, does somebody look at it every day? Does somebody only look at it if something is amiss? Who, whose job is it to look at it? How does it tie into like what the Inoka County Sheriff would recommend? So I think we, I think this is a good start. I just feel like we might need more information.
I agree. Maybe table this one and ask him to come and give us more information.
And if you can maybe let him know what all the questions are, then.
Then he can come back and present.
Better prepared too.
Try out your new policy.
Yeah, really.
NDAA stands for National Defense Authorization Act.
That's so helpful, isn't it? Sounds like you're building a bomb.
If I read down, it says the NDAA twenty twenty-three has, or two thousand twenty-three has been signed into law. I don't want to read the law at the moment, so.
Well, and I think one of the questions might be too, like who, who can have access to the footage? I mean, I think that comes up sometimes even with private, you know, doorbell footage and things like that. So I just think we, we need to not just think about the system and all the hardware stuff, but also the, the sort of policy questions behind it.
Well, can we have them come to a workshop or, or something and tell us what they're selling us?
Yep, I agree.
And, and we'll take it from there. More details.
So we had a motion and a second, so do we have to?
Just withdraw the motion.
Just withdraw the motion? Go ahead, Jess.
Motion withdrawn. Is there a second to withdraw?
Yeah, I'll second that.
That's why we talk before we make motions.
Fall for a vote for what? Fall for a vote for what?
Withdraw.
Oh, we're voting, do we vote on withdrawing?
You don't have to vote to withdraw. Just the motion maker withdraws the motion.
Yep. All right, public works, Jim?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Public work, or, sorry, public communications.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
City Administrator.
Well, as you, as you can tell, we're getting towards the end of the year, and our agendas are gonna get a little bit longer. But I have two things on my, um, report. The Doolies, um, several years ago, um, started a project. And when they started this project, we knew that this project was going to be one of the more difficult projects um, to do a subdivision, because the land that they had, uh, that they wanted to subdivide had a fair amount of wetlands, had a fair amount of ponds, and it was, there was gonna be a little trick to it in order to subdivide it. But that's really the story of Columbus, when we have lots of wetlands, you know, we have to be a little creative. And so we held a, a meeting, and what I said to everyone is, you know, looking at this property, what can we do to make this work? Not, you didn't mean, and, and what kinds of things can we do? And in this particular case, we worked out, you know, a subdivision. And while it wasn't ideal, um, it gave Columbus four additional lots in, in a, in parcels that may or may not have been developed in a different way. And what that did was it gave, um, it was basically a private drive, and there were gonna be three driveways off of, um, it was gonna be a private road, rather, and there was gonna be three driveways, um, over that private drive, or private road. And after all is said and done, you know, there's a lot of work that went into it, a lot of wetland delineations, um, Rice Creek, Rottershed District, um, and I think, um, I think Sunrise was involved, um, as the L G U. We did, we had a fair amount of people looking at this particular, um, preliminary plat. When we got the preliminary plat, um, we realized that there was not an order, ordinary high water level for, um, low floor elevation and, or I'm sorry, for floodplain elevation. And so the state determined what the low floor, um, or the water level would be in this area for, for floodplain. And it was discovered that it needed a letter of map amendment. And if any of you had to apply for a letter of map amendment, it takes a little while to do that. You have to send in a survey, and you have to, um, especially when you're proposing building, because you have to propose how much fill you're gonna bring in, what you're gonna do on that property. So they had a little, a little, you didn't mean setbacks here, you didn't mean along the way when they were doing their preliminary plat. They were awarded their Loma. Well, after they were awarded the Loma, um, everybody said, well, well now what are they gonna do with their septic system? You can't build a septic system on fill. And so, so that was, you didn't mean, another issue that we had to go through the state and M P C A and figure out, okay, are we, are, how are we gonna work through this? And basically, the state said, if the city wants to give a variance for a septic system that is either on fill or in the floodplain and/or flood fringe, it's up to their jurisdiction, and we're not gonna, we're not going to, um, we're, you know, we'll permit it. So that's where they sit today. It's been a very long road between trying to get these approvals, trying to figure out how to get these approvals, try to get the Loma to bring in the fill, and then discover that the septic systems were in a flood fringe and/or floodway um, area, which our code says you can't have a septic system. M P C A doesn't say you can't have a septic system in it, our code does. So now they need a variance. And so, you know, so at this point, here's the juncture. If, if the council doesn't, and, and it's a conditional use permit, by the way, it's a, a, there's a condition, a conditional use permit for a planned unit development, that's what we issued, because we had lots of deviations. But in this case, they need a variance for this, for these two septic sites, because they can't do, they can't do type ones in either of the lots. But I'm not sure whether they're doing one lot or two lots. Right now, the preliminary plat has two lots, a forty into two twenties in the back, in the back forty. So that was a really long story for what they're requesting. So, um, they have now got their daughter involved, and that's who the email is from. And after I explained the whole situation of what they needed, she said, well, I think I need to go to council and ask for an extension, because I, you know, I mean, I'm not gonna be able to do all of this, and we're already almost beyond our two years. I agree, we're beyond our, our year, and, and our, and our ordinance says that you put your conditional use permit into place, um, or you continue on working on it. But I think here is an exception, exception, that we've been working very long on this project, and to now tell them that they have to start over just doesn't seem quite fair, knowing that they have to go through a variance application. So that's what she's asking for. She's asking for more time, and that you still honor her preliminary plat approval. And so what I've included in your agenda packet is the minutes, because if you look at the minutes and the conditions, it's from twenty twenty-one.
Is that in the additions?
It's in the additions, yes. So it's, it's, uh, well, I take it back. Her email is in the regular agenda packet, which is pages forty-six and forty-seven. In the additions, I provided you with the, um, minutes from the meeting, from the original, from the original, um, approvals. And I know we have entirely too much paper tonight. Because I figured someone was gonna ask, well, when was it originally approved? And it was approved in June of twenty twenty-one. So yes, they're late for the request, and they're late for applying for the variance, but I will tell you that we've had many meetings on this. And I think it's a very diff, uh, difficult concept when you introduce FEMA and letters of map amendment and floodplain, and we had to, um, include the, um, state floodplain, um, person, um, in order to determine that elevation. So there was a long, there was a long litany of things that we had to do in order to make this right. And now we're two years later, two plus years later, and, um, we have a person requesting whether you'll honor the original approvals.
So question, you just said, um, and I understand the story and the challenge, but we're not approving the original, whatever, we're just approving an extension. Okay.
And, and Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may ask, it, I don't see the, um, time, how, how much time are you extending, suggesting it be extended? Is it twelve months, six months?
I think they're gonna need twelve months.
And Elizabeth, um, what is the variance? Is it for a type three septic system? Because usually you do that administratively, so I don't, what are we, what are we varying on?
So in a, in a new, if for existing homes, we do administrative variances. You know, because, you didn't mean, and that's the way it's structured. This is, you're allowing a subdivision to happen, and you, knowing that you don't have two type one systems.
But is it a type three that they would have to put in? Or what is it that they're proposing? Because I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna approve a variance for something, I mean, I'd like to know what the variance is.
I don't have the application yet. And so, um, the, and that's what I basically said to them, and this is what we've been saying for a year. You need to go to someone who knows about septic systems. And you have to tell me what kind of septic system will go, will go on fill with a Loma in floodplain
Yeah.
on this, so, because I don't know. And so I think that's been the difficult message, basically saying that on your subdivision, you don't have a viable place where you can put a type one system. Now you have to go to someplace, ask a designer, just tell us what kind of system it is, and then apply for a variance, because otherwise, you're not gonna be able to put two homes on the back two lots. And I don't know what type of system is going to work.
So can we just, can we just vote on the extension and not include the septic until we have more information on what we're actually varying on?
Yeah, that was just the justification for the extension.
Yeah.
I think you can strike due to the need for.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought we were also approving a variance for septic.
No.
It was just the reason for.
Ah, got it.
Yep. So I think it's fine to strike that part of the motion.
So I'll make the motion to approve the extension for the amount, or length of time of twelve months for the recording of the final plat and conditional use permit for the planned unit of development, planned unit of development, due to the need for an additional variance requirements for the septic system.
No, 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 we're, we're striking that.
Yep.
We're striking that. We're just.
You don't need that portion of the motion, just everything after the word do is, including the word do is stricken. Sorry.
After the word what, Bill, do?
Yeah, including the word do, after the word development. Planned unit development is the end of the motion.
And scratch all the rest of it?
Yep. So there isn't an appearance that you've approved a, a septic system?
But that was just the reason we were giving, extending it. But they could be confused. Is there a second?
I second, Janet.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Bill. Uh, I wasn't, I was on the planning commission when this went through, I wasn't on the council. I didn't vote for it last time, so am I allowed to vote on this?
Sure.
Okay, that was my question.
Absolutely.
Call for the vote?
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
The next one is also a question, um, Caribou Coffee, uh, which was, um, had a development, a developer, um, and there were two different developers that actually did this project. So when we, when we talk about this, there's three different parties. But at the time it was developed, and in your, in your materials, there's a, there's a, um, handout, and it says certification of completion. So in the top portion of it, it has E and J Investments.
Single page.
It's a, it's a, yep. So, um, C and J Investments, E and R Investments, all alludes to the Caribou Coffee development. And in this particular case, if you look at the, the next to last paragraph where it says, not withstanding this certificate, the developer's obligations is to guarantee, guarantee landscaping improvements, and this letter of credit will continue to March seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. And the amount of the letter of credit is eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. The developer has called me and has indicated to me that he feels that we should release the letter of credit early, because he feels in March seventeenth of twenty twenty-four, we will not be able to evaluate whether the plants are alive or not. And that today, um, if, you know, the inspection is done, um, you know, you will be able to tell whether the plants are in good shape. So I told them I would bring it to the council, because the development agreement says that we will have this letter of credit in place till March of twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we, we discussed it, the one suggestion that I had was, um, we look at the state of the landscaping today, probably before, before the weekend, since it's gonna get real cold. But, um, so two options. One would be to say, you know, it looks good, we're gonna go ahead and release it early, because, you know, looking at it in March isn't gonna make much difference. Or you can just simply say, no, the requirement is that it stay until March, and if we see something we don't like in March, we might draw on the letter. So those are your two options.
Who looks at it?
Sean or?
Okay.
Jim, I don't know.
I mean, to me, it would be, it would be Sean who would go, you didn't mean, go out to landscaping. Um, they've informed me that they've looked and inspected the landscaping, and it's in order. Uh, you know, between trees and landscaping, I think he's just gonna.
So he has gone out and looked at it?
Um, I believe he, he has looked at it, uh, because we talked about it. I, I just, I don't, I don't have, um, I don't have the report. I just wanted to bring it to the council meeting, because, um, Greg has called me a number of times about this letter of credit.
So what would happen if, I mean, in March, of course, it's not gonna be much different, or it's gonna be totally, it's either gonna be covered in snow, or the snow's gonna melt, and we're gonna see dead shrubs? Or, I mean, what are we gonna see in March?
Well, that's, that's the, the question they're raising, is it, it really doesn't do you any good. On the other hand, and this is, you know, kind of conjuring up hypotheticals, but, you know, let's say somebody goes over the curb and runs over a bunch of bushes, you know, in, on March first. Well, you have a letter of credit that you can draw on and say, you know, fix that, and we'll give you the proceeds when it's fixed. So, you know, in some ways, you're giving them relief early. In other, you know, on the other hand, it, it does make sense, you're not gonna see much change probably between now and March. And, and even if you do, you won't be able to say what's dead.
Well, would we be setting a precedence by releasing it early for others?
No, not necessarily. I mean, you can take action based on the specific facts and circumstances involved in this case. The fact that you're going into the winter season, and it's gonna be of little use to you between now and then. I think, you know, one of the things we can look at, typically, we extend for a year, but we could also look at seasonality of these obligations. That, that occurred to me when I looked at this date, you know, well, maybe we would be better off if it had gone until June.
Is this really gonna help him? Or how, how do you think this will help him if we release it early?
Well, I, I, I don't know if there's a bank charge for holding this out, but, you know, typically, when they're done, they like to be done and, and kind of walk away and say to the lender, the lender, to have a letter of credit, the lender has some hold on some asset of theirs, you know, whether it's, it's cash, whether it's some other form of asset that backs up the letter of credit. And, you know, they just assume, release that, you know, that lien on that asset. I'm, I'm not speaking for them one way or the other, this is clearly kind of your call. If, if you think it makes sense to hold on to it for a couple more months, then that's the conservative position. If you, if you agree with the developer that, um, you know, that it doesn't make much sense, then you can release it.
Okay, thank you.
I guess if we're, if we're talking, I'd be favor, in favor of holding that money till the last, you know, till we can. Just, just for things like you said, this winter, something happens. This spring, someone drives across their yard, and there's wet soil, and now we got ruts, and we got no way of enforcing them to fix it.
Is that against the company, or is that against the?
That's against the developer, which is ultimately the owner of this project.
Is that?
But isn't this really about, did they put in the lands, the, the plants that they had on their, on their plan? And not about fixing damaged goods? I mean.
That's, that's a fair distinction. I mean, I, I conjured up the wrong hypothetical, because it isn't really intended to repair damage. It's to replace dead materials, so it's probably fair to say that's the distinction. And so the question would be, is someone gonna go out in March, identify dead material, and say it has to be replaced? The better, to me, the better approach is, if, if you want to release it, then staff should give you, you know, tell Elizabeth, yeah, I did go out there and everything looks fine, you know? Otherwise, um, hold on to it. I mean, I, I'm not necessarily in favor of just releasing things because someone asked, right? I think it's appropriate when, you know, we have in a development agreement, when improvements go in and they're accepted, they go through the city engineer, we reduce the letter of credit. But this is, this is what, uh, four or five months? They're looking for, release four or five months early, so.
You know what seems really strange about this, though, is that it's two years after they built the thing. So it's already gone through one winter. So it was built in March of twenty twenty-two, or sometime during twenty twenty-two, so it went through the winter already. So if they, if they plant shrubs or trees or whatever, you usually get a one-year guarantee on those things. Their guarantee from the, from the, um, nursery is gonna be expired. So I, I, I guess I am. Why did we make this for two years instead of just one? Is it because we weren't sure when they were actually gonna get these things installed, or?
It, it's, it's one year after we release the, the balance of the letter of credit. So the letter of credit, um, well, actually, they didn't have any public improvement, so this is probably just a landscape. So the letter of credit, well, actually, they didn't have any public improvement, so this is probably just a landscape, yeah.
So it's just, so the way I see it is, they, they planted what they were supposed to, it's already gone through a winter. I don't know, I've gone there a couple times, nothing struck me as being dead or ugly-looking. And if it dies this winter, they're, I mean, it would be just like if trees died anywhere. I mean, they're supposed to keep the place looking nice, and they're not going to be able to go back to their nursery to get it replaced under that. So I don't, I don't see a reason to hold, hold this for any longer, if they planted what they said they were going to plant. I mean, they meant, they meant the obligation of the agreement.
I agree with you on that idea, I mean, for two years, seems like a long time. I mean, they're asking for four months off, five months off, because we're already in November, December.
Well, and like, if it had been, if it hadn't gone through a winter, and we wanted to make sure whatever they planted lasted through a winter, but it already has. So at this point, I think we, I, I'm okay with, I would be okay with giving it back to them, making it, making an early judgment.
Make your motion.
So I move to approve the early release of the letter of credit for the landscaping at Caribou Coffee, one five five six one Hornsby Street, in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven fifty, effective October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Robney. And Jesse, aye.
And I have nothing else on my report.
Did we lose our Zoom?
We did.
Time for our coffee.
We burnt them out.
I think we should applaud our, our person in the audience who stuck with us the whole time.
And announcements and reminders, planning commission meeting, November first, at six. City council meeting, November eighth, at six. City workshop, November fourteenth, at six. The calendar's on the back. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. Our meeting is adjourned for tonight. Thank you, everyone.